Hi, everybody. This is a poker coaching study session. We are studying cash games and we're going to be looking at button. When we call on the button and how we play on the flop after that, after a raise, we're probably looking at it. And we're going to look at under gun, under the gun raises to start with. We might look at some other positions. But here we go. And just a reminder that in the GTO Wizard, hijack and cutoff have no calling range. So you only, the only position you're going to call from are button and big blind. And then GTO Wizard does a small blind, but we don't. But if you're someone who does have a calling range in the hijack or a calling range in the cutoff, and many people do, this is probably going to be relatively applicable to those positions also. All right, let's go.
Okay, so right now I have under the gun, I have it set up for under the gun raise, button calls, flop comes and under the gun checks. Um, if we go back here globally, under the gun should be checking almost 70% of the time. So 70% of these hands should get checked to you.
And we're going to, I'm going to assume, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, that out there in the wild, the checking range from under the gun here is way lower than 70%. That under, that people do, people c bet much more than GTO, which also means these GTO ranges are going to be much stronger than the checked ranges that we get. And so we're going to be playing against now, we're going to be playing against the best player in the world who protects his checking range. So watch out.
Can you, can you suggest why Phil Ivey would do that? Or I mean, like GTO would do that? Cause that's certainly not my experience in the wild.
Yeah, yeah, the, I'll give it, everybody will give their reason for why you do this. So against weaker players, just bald aggression is probably your best move. Making the adjustment that out of position, you c bet a lot and you c bet more than GTO is probably a very good variation. It's going to make you money in the long run, especially at low stakes. But because of that, the best players in the world who Phil Ivey is playing against have learned that if you do that, you're leaving yourself hanging out to dry too much against the buttons tighter range than yours. Because the button doesn't have a lot of call bluffs. You have, you have, you have, he's got a very thin range there that he called you with. And so you make these c bets and they destroy you when they're better players than that, if you c bet too much. There are lots of ways, and I'm, I'm not a good enough player to destroy those people. But let me tell you, if you're sitting at a table with Phil Ivey or Jonathan Little and you are c betting 50% of your hands, 60% of your hands in this configuration, they're going to destroy you because they know your, they know your range didn't connect that often. And they're going to find all kinds of bluffs you're not going to be able to play against. All kinds of non-intuitive bluffs that they're going to raise. So, so do you want me to finish and then you're up? So Phil Ivey is not going to play this way against you. Phil Ivey is going to play this way against Jonathan Little. And that's what we're studying now. We're trying to be both Phil Ivey and Jonathan Little. Now you were saying.
So the way I play is I certainly c bet too much. So probably if I'm suddenly finding myself in like a 100, 200 game, I should probably not tone it down considerably. Like I think if you want to be maximum exploitable, like I play in really tiny stakes where the players play awful.
Yeah.
So, but Phil Ivey probably doesn't play awful. So if I move up in sticks, I probably have to make major changes to my game.
Exactly.
Does that make sense?
Yep, makes total sense. And remember, the exploit that you're playing there is if it's appropriate for your stakes, it is the best play.
Yeah, but then the question becomes, are they overfalling in these stakes?
Yeah. Does it work? Yeah. I think they do, by the way. I think that's, I think that I think.
Hard to say if they are in position, you're out of position. I thought that's true.
Yeah, don't know.
I, I think if you were to change the assumptions of the calling range of your typical player, then continuation betting more frequently is going to be a, a better play, not better play, but a more, more towards optimal.
They are too wide.
Joey, can we look at the calling range of button here and we'll compare it using what?
Yeah.
Mike just said, cause I think he's got a good point.
This is the open range for under the gun. Basically, the way I memorize it is offsuit jacks suited nines. And aces can go down to ace three. And I usually stop at sixes, but you can throw these in. But I do hit these suited connectors more than, and you always know when you stop at suited nines, kings always go down at least one, maybe two or more on the suited kings. And then the call range.
So what's interesting to me here is that we're raising, we're three betting more than we are calling, but I don't, as Mike said, it doesn't happen in population.
But our call range is still a reasonable set of hands. It's protected with ace, king off and queens. Have all the pairs in there, all the suited connectors at some point.
Yeah, but. Population is, is calling way wider than this, as we know. Even people, even us on this call, look at a lot of these hands and are calling them on the button, which, which is evident by some of our calls. When we go through hands, we see a lot of us are like, oh, I'd never fold fours on the button. I'd never fold a suited ace on the button. I'd never fold a suited king on the button kind of thing.
I do.
No, I know. I'm saying some of us like that comes across a lot on these calls, even, even those who are studied.
I'm, I'm definitely guilty as charged. I, I call with all small pairs because my opponents stack off if they have aces.
Yeah, but I also think that, that's what I do. Players call with ace, queen off and king, queen off. They don't three bet them, so they also have stronger hands in their range. Not only the weak hands. For, for instance, king, queen suited, they might just call and not three bet a little more.
Yep.
Another quick question. Are we looking at NL 500 rake? Because there's a lot of calling range?
Yeah, it is set for NL 500, but I didn't do that on purpose.
What does that mean?
Good question.
If the rake is lower, you can call more.
Okay.
Okay.
NL 50, it's a 5% rake with a four big blind cap. NL 500, it's a 5% rake with a 0.6 big blind cap.
Wow. What a, so.
So NL 500 has a much better rake structure, therefore you can play a bit wider range of hands, less aggressively.
I play with a time.
Oh, if you're playing on a time, if you're playing on a time game, then you can play wider than, than these ranges we're looking at. There is no rake.
So I should probably, I should probably look at NL 500, because there's basically no rake in.
Yeah. Actually, if you want, just for pre-flop, you could come over to pre-flop only and look at CEV.
What does CEV mean?
Chip, chip, expected value.
Okay.
No rake. Basically, it's a way of saying no rake.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, so for a time game, I should probably just look at no rake. Okay.
But.
Good to know.
Let's take a look at that range once. Let's look at that CEV range and just see how much it changes. Just, just in this configuration. Let's see what it does to those fours and threes and twos.
So under gun. See, we get much wider calling range without rake.
Yeah, look at that.
Ah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's huge.
Mm-hmm.
So I have a choice of two places to play. One place is $20 rake. And the other place is time game, $7 a half hour.
So I imagine like. Stakes and what the stakes are for the $20 carry.
Um, all stakes are $20.
Yeah, I don't think that.
Meaning a $20 max, meaning the $20 max per hand, like it goes five.
Yeah, like, like the 510 you can buy in for 3,000.
Yeah.
So it's not that bad for the 510, but for like 1-3, it's like, you have, I couldn't, Phil Ivey probably couldn't beat it.
Yeah.
So.
You play in Texas?
No, no, I play in Ontario. I, I'm close, I'm between like Fallsview, which is time rake and the other places in like Woodbine, which is like $20.
A $20 rake per ha, what? Per hand?
Max, yeah, yeah, it's 10% max 20 bucks. So that's like stupid, right?
I would.
Okay.
Like if you're, if you're playing 3,000 deep, 510, then it's not that bad or like 5,000 deep, you know, 2550, but still 10. Small, small stakes, it's ridiculous, right?
Yeah.
So I don't think, I don't think even playing GTO optimal, you could even beat like $20 rake. Unless you're playing like 510.
Let's go back.
3,000.
I agree with you. Let's go back one thing though, here on, on the idea when you said even playing GTO optimal. GTO optimal is not the, is not the way to play poker the most profitably.
Oh, I agree 100%.
GTO, what, what, what GTO means is GTO is studying a game and finding something called the Nash equilibrium, which is what is a strategy that if you handed someone your full strategy, you said, here is how I'm going to play. Here is my book. I'm going to play exactly like this. But there is no strategy that they can combat it with that does better than break even over the long term. Or in this case, break even minus rake. So.
Larry, do you, while we're doing this, do you want to set up the trainer?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. So if two, if two GTO people are playing against each other, they're expecting to just lose the rake over time.
Mm-hmm.
The way to make money best in poker is to, is to know GTO as your basis. Because until you know how someone plays wrong, you want, you want to be just playing straight down the middle. And once you figure out either how population plays wrong or that player plays wrong, you then adjust, which allows you to be exploitable. And now it's a, now it's a game of who is trying to exploit each other and how they're able to. Um, before we start the trainer, I have one question, because I gave this whole speech about, um, why we check out of, why we have to check out of position against Phil Ivey and why Phil Ivey checks out of position, whereas against the other players, we don't. Does anybody disagree or have a better explanation for this? For this, since that's.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're saying, what I heard from it is that the better the players are, either higher the stakes, the closer to theory we should play as opposed to an exploitable game against population.
Yeah, well, first of all, my whole idea is that we should learn GTO first. GTO comes before exploits because our exploits should be deviations from GTO. Based on what mistakes our opponent is making. So if we don't understand GTO to start with, we don't know how to deviate from the baseline to make the right adjustments.
I agree 100% with that, but that's not what I did. I, I play, I put like, yesterday's session was really eye opening for me because I consider sacrilege to fold threes on the button to a raise. Because I want my opponents to have aces and then stack off 300 big lines deep.
Yep.
So like, um, but it never occurs to me that if I was playing Phil Ivey, I fold my threes, because Phil Ivey isn't going to stack off.
So it's not, it's not, it's not clear that you should change your actual strategy the next time you go to a casino and play. It is not at all clear that you should, if you're, if that exploit is working for you, maybe you should continue it, but the thing.
If you ever played 1-3, you want your opponent to have aces, because they're going to stack off 300 big blinds to your set of threes.
Yes.
Well. No, I will strongly disagree with that.
Well, I'm not playing against Phil Ivey.
I, I don't care. I still strongly disagree with that. I've been playing for over 20 years. And I've been hearing people lump all the players into the same single bucket that everyone will stack off with aces versus my small set. And that is not true. You do have players that will, but you also have justice, you also have a selection of players that they not, might not be well studied, but they won't stack off.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I caution everybody, there, like, there's a lot of fish, but not every fish plays the same. There are some fish that are too tight. There are some fish that are too loose. There are some fish that are too aggressive. But you can't lump every single player into the same bucket and say, everybody stacks off every time I flop a set.
Okay.
And.
So should I, should I change the way I'm playing is what I, what I'm asking you guys?
So here, you know.
Not necessarily, but maybe rethink the reality versus the
emotion.
This, the setup that you already have set up in your mind.
Yeah, you're, you're going to find the edge of yourself after some soul searching and just like, you know, asking questions and, and yeah, being part of the study groups.
I mean, one way to look at it is look, consider how big your sample size is.
Um.
And then, once you look at your sample size, ask yourself if you're making money.
And one of the things also, you said, they are 300 big blinds deep. That's different than 100, huh?
I think, I think it was last week when we were looking at Scotty's hands, or maybe the week before, where we saw somebody fold pocket queens, which was an overpair to the board to a double barrel.
Okay.
We also though, one thing with that, we also don't know if that, this was online, we don't know that he wasn't disconnected. You know, there's always that, it's always that thing, but.
But there aren't players that don't fault that creature.
But Derek, here's, here's the thing. You know your player pool better than we do. You're in those games and we're not. So, so when we say something about the player pool, we're saying either the player pool that we experience, or if some of us have got access to mass data analysis, you know, the player pool that we've learned about. And that may not be the pool you're playing in. So we don't know whether you should stop calling all of these deuces and threes on the button. They may be profitable for your pool, but we do know this. If you want to move up in stakes, you're going to want to know these strategies and only deviate from them for a reason.
Okay, so.
And it could be one player at the table. You could be playing at 20, 40 and see that the two guys at the table here came from, you know, they were playing blackjack and now they're playing poker.
Yep.
You know?
All right, can we?
Yeah, so let's go.
So can we get, all right, so one, one of the reasons why we are checking so often can be seen here in this table. Globally, there is not really any range advantage. 51, 48 is not tremendous range advantage, just slightly, but if we go over to here, we see the problem. The equity realization issues of the out of position player.
Yeah, you see that also in the column.
And does everybody on this call know what equity realization is? Is there anyone who doesn't know? If they don't, we'll explain it. Otherwise, we're going to move on.
I think I know what it is.
Okay, good. Now I guess we can move on.
Well, really, I could make it a really quick definition.
Great.
You have 51% equity globally on the flops. However, you only realize 85% of that 51%. Which means you get about 43% equity at the end of the hand.
And the reason is simple. When you're out of position, you make less money on the river. You know, you have more places where you don't get to put in that bet when he checks. Um, he gets more, he wins more of the jump balls. There's just so many things you can do in position you can't do out of position. And that turns into your equity realization problem.
Strange that imposition doesn't have more than 100%, but that's something else.
Well, it, the turn or the under the gun range is still kind of tight. All right, so looking globally at, after under the gun checks, we have about 55% checking range. And if you look at the, down here on this upper end, like the high, high cards, we're doing a lot of high betting, large betting when we do bet. And as the board gets lower, you'll notice our bet sizing.
Did your meeting go okay?
Oh, yeah, when you go, I don't talk about it soon. I mean, I'm in a, I'm in a.
Switching to that.
Pico.
So as the board gets smaller, our bet sizes get smaller and our frequency starts going up.
So smaller cards on the board, your frequency goes up and you bet smaller sizes. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
With larger cards like the ace high, we, if we look at any of these ace high, it doesn't look like we get a 50% betting range at all. Most times it looks like it's about 25%. Um, paired king boards, it goes up a little, but then king, queen and under, it goes back down and with big bets. Parrot queen boards.
So.
Go ahead.
So, um, the bigger the column is, the more frequently your bet, the redder the column is, the bigger the size. Is that what we're seeing?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Sorry, sorry for interrupting.
No, it's fine. Do you see these lines in, going up the graph?
Yep.
Right here is 25%, that's 50%, that's 75% and up top is 100%.
Frequency.
Right. And the red would indicate a bigger bet size. The redder it is, the bigger the bet size.
Bet sizes are over here. Checks are in green. And, and then each shade of color tells you how big the bet is. This one's 33%. This shade is 50%. That's 75% and this is an overbet.
What I find interesting is if you look at the correlation between our bet frequency and our bet size, we could see the heuristic that on boards that we bet more often or betting smaller.
Yeah, most of them, yes, because we have, if we bet more than we have probably a range advantage and you want to bet small.
Yeah, and I heard a poker coaching coach, I can't remember who, is when the out of position player checks on a board that would typically be a good continuation bet board for them. When you bet, it will be a bigger size. When they check on a board that is, uh, on a flop that is good for the in position player, then you get to bet more frequently at a small size, which we can see here. This illustrates that very clearly.
Yes.
I think that was that flag.
Does anybody want to see any other breakdowns of this report?
Um, can we sort by our highest check frequency?
And while you're doing that, can somebody answer Pico Poker's question? I know what EQR is, equity realization quite well, but which ways I forgot. Is it EV over EQ or EQ over EV?
No, um, there's not really a specific formula. It is more of the computer analyzing outcomes. And it, it's a data, it's a data set that the computer running all these solves has analyzed, this is how much equity the range will get as opposed to how much raw equity data it has at the time on the flop.
Yeah, the solver doesn't know anything about pot odds. It doesn't know anything about equity realization, doesn't know anything about any of the math theorems or math equations that we use. It just uses something called counterfactual, someone help me out here.
Regret minimization.
Yeah, yes, that's it. Counterfactual regret minimization. And it plays a hand a zillion times. And then it comes up with a solution, but it internally to the algorithm, it doesn't know pot odds, it doesn't know MDF. All it knows is to use a tool to play a hand a zillion times and then come up with an optimal solution for each side at equilibrium.
Words like MDF and pot odds and stuff like that all come up from our human language trying to explain what we see in the data from the computer.
Well, that's a very cool way of saying it, yeah.
And, and, and one other thing, some, a lot of those theorems, they come, even if you didn't have a solver, there are certain things you could come up with. Like you could come up with MDF because it's just a, it's a logical extension from, you know, a toy game. And other things are patterns that we look at, um, where we're trying to explain what we see that the solver does and trying to come up with heuristics. So they come from both directions and, and that difference is unimportant.
Um, as an aside, was anybody in Jaffe's class on Saturday? That he did? He, um, he had some interesting things to say about MDF. Essentially, without getting into it too far, he said, MDF is not really a consideration until you're playing at the highest stakes. And what's much more important is understanding the propensity of population or the propensity of the particular human you're playing.
Interesting.
So we, so we have to have some baseline to.
That's, well, that's kind of obvious.
Oh, I didn't know it would be obvious. I thought it'd be something good to share with the, the group.
Oh, okay. Well, see, well, I don't know if you've been reading a lot of my stuff in the forum, but I've been saying that, not in those words, in the forum, that say we're looking at a river call. I keep telling people not to use MDF because MDF only works if they have a balanced betting range. And almost nobody in population has a balanced river betting range.
So they bet when they have the nuts? They don't bluff enough? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the simplest way to put it is most of the population is value heavy.
Yep.
So you, you don't call off with the bluff catchers that MDF will find.
Cause I find that in my population, no one has the balls to check raise me on the river without the nuts. So like, I can make an exploitable fold 100%. Like when they, when they check me, raise me on the river, I'm, I probably fold 100% because I assume that they don't have the recreational players don't have the balls to check raise bluff.
That exists, but the, one of the things that we're going to see on, in Monday games, which is where we get to see all, in the Monday session where we see everybody's hands, is whether or not that assumption is right. Because one of the things that all of us do is we create narratives about what the other players are playing, are doing, like I bet so big, he had to fold. When we don't know what their hands were, we, you know, because.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because to, to make the conclusion that, that, not that your play is wrong, your play could be absolutely profitable. But to make the conclusion that they're only doing it with the nuts, because that's all you've seen him do, would require you calling them a lot more than you should and a lot more than you do. You don't get that confirmation and we'll, and we get.
I think it's been years since I've called someone's check raise when they didn't have the nuts.
Yeah, but it's also, but also you sold a lot.
You don't have to be the guinea pig. You just have to be very observant when somebody else is calling them.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's the old thing of saying a professional poker player sometimes will call you just to see what your hand was, is not true. A good poker player watches when other people make that mistake. So let's do, let's do some exercises.
Okay, so Larry, you wanted to see the checking range or the high check flops?
Yeah, yeah. So, so this is, I find this interesting because we see paired boards and we see monito boards. I don't know if we could really take, you know, a 20 second heuristic from this, but.
Well, actually, the one thing I do see is king, 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 ace, king, 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 ace, ace, king, ace, king, 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 ace, king, ace, king, 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 ace, 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 king, king. Nothing on this first page is anything but an ace or king high.
So it looks like.
All waiting here before we see a queen high.
Yeah. The other thing I find interesting is that if we look at the bottom, at the full length, we can again see the one heuristic I think which is easy to take from this is that the correlation between our betting frequency and our small betting size, the more we bet, the smaller we bet.
Right.
And what are we sorted by right now, Joey? Are we sorted by big bets?
Check. No checks.
Oh, when we check, okay, gotcha. What do we, what boards do we check the most? And they're the boards that, that many of us check the least.
Our exceptions have the suited ones, so. Our exceptions have the the suited ones, so we bet always small for instance.
There's a couple here in the near, near range bet side and it's like.
So eight highs, we bet the most, king highs.
No, no, it's not. No, don't. It's not just eight high. It's a a middle card straight flopped on the board.
That's a hundred percent bad.
Six, five, four, seven, six, five, eight, seven, six, nine, eight, seven, seven, six, five. Um, six, five, four, nine, six, five.
And that's because we oh, we call with suited connectors way more than they, the heart, a larger percent of our range than they open suited connectors. Is that it?
Yeah.
These proportional are.
Yeah.
So this is when we're on the button and the under the gun bet to us and then check to us. Is that correct?
Yeah, he opened.
That's what we're looking at?
Under the gun checks.
Okay.
If you wanna real, look real close when he does bet. Um. Globally. We have fourteen percent raises and a lot of calls. So you could see this. Because actually, if you go back to here and look at his. Global, most of his bets are thirty-three percent. Less than ten percent, he's. Less than ten percent of the time, he's gonna be doing anything different than checking or betting thirty-three. So when he bets, this is our reaction. A lot of calling and a little bit of raising looks like. Almost across the board.
Hmm.
Eight, seven, six.
The the ones we just pointed out where we. Bet range if check two. Looks like we're having some more.
Raises.
Seven, seven, six, five. Six, five, four. So those middle card straights that flop. We do get more. Raises. All right, so does anybody wanna see more on this one? All right, so I guess.
So. Can I ask? Another question?
Sure.
So what stakes do you find? You would change to a game theory optimal? Like. Do you guys play like ten, twenty or? Higher?
I've played, I've played higher. I don't, that's not my regular game. Um. And it isn't, and for me, it is not a at larger stakes, I play more game theory optimal. It's. The way Joey said it, which is I'm trying to learn game theory optimal, which I do not play. I'm not able to play game theory optimal. Um, and. Truly, it is probably the case that no human is really able to play fully game theory optimal. Um, but people get. Closer and closer to it and they're way, way better at it than I am. It's that I try to know this and whenever I deviate from what I understand, I have a reason. And that could be at lower stake, e- even at the lowest stakes, there could be a reason to deviate or not. And when I sit down in the first hands, I try to play pretty close to it until. I see a reason because while I think that I should deviate, I don't know which directions. You know, I have, I have a general assumption, like, you know, these were the, the general assumptions that we've come out of in this group. Um, and anybody who wants to add to this or correct this, if if I'm wrong on any of these, make sure I say it because I'm gonna say this with absolute confidence because my job is saying things that I don't know with absolute confidence. Um. Which is. If you look at the hands that you're three betting. I, I think the right exploit is you three bet the hands that you should three bet more often than is GTO. You don't three bet more hands than are GTO, but you three bet them at a higher frequency. Joey three bets more hands. He goes even further. Um, but at a, at a minimum, all of us think you should be three betting more often. Than GTO. Um.
Okay.
I believe that. At the stakes I play, that I can bet out of position as the raise first, you know, in the exact exercise we're doing right now. You know, you're under the gun and you get called by the button or the cutoff or the hijack, that you can bet more than is GTO. Um, and that is a profit deviation.
I definitely bet way more than this.
Yeah, yeah.
I see that way more than this. I see that, I mean, see that because I just. If I haven't seen the person before, I just assume they play fit and fold and they're gonna.
Yeah.
Drop tons of equity on the table, so.
No, I, I think that's wrong.
Yeah, that's wrong and.
In our experience, people call too often.
Yeah. I agree.
But I have a much less complicated way to put it.
Yeah.
Whenever you reach the stakes where you're not the best player at the table, GTO is great defense.
Oh, yeah.
That's good.
I just assume everyone's an idiot until proven otherwise. Because I play one, three.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that might work at one, three, but you go to two, five. Two, five, you might have a pro or two sitting there.
Right, right.
Two, five hours a week.
Right.
And if one, three is the highest game in your casino, then they're good sit pros.
No, there's uh, there's two, five and five, ten.
Okay, and they move up to the higher levels.
One thing I'll add real quick is that if you wanna see someone play GTO, this streamer named CJ. He um, lives by the solver. And so. He plays during the day, five days a week, and he plays NL two hundred on VCR. And he'll run his hands through. GTA Wizard at the end. And, you know, his. Accuracy numbers to GTA player usually around ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent.
Wow.
He's playing.
Wow. That's, that's, that's robot quality right there.
So, so if you wanna see someone who plays in.
Oh, good.
You wanna see somebody plays, you know, in that, in that vein, you could watch CJ. Or maybe, you know, um.
Does it? RNG or is it just a hitting nineties?
Say it again, sorry.
Does he use it with RNG or is he just hitting nineties? I mean, most of the time he can do anything.
Hits like ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, but he um. He does, he RNG's every move.
What does ERGs mean?
RNG, random number.
Random uh randomized.
So, when you have, when you look at GTO and it gives you a, you know, a certain percentage of hands of of outcomes, like you say, I have aces here and forty percent of the time I should raise it big, thirty percent of the time I should raise it small. And thirty percent of the time I should check. If that's what GTO says. Most of us look at what is the biggest number there? We go, that's what I should do. I should do whatever the biggest number is because that's the most common GTO move. But.
I look at my watch.
It would be, yeah, true GTO.
The second hand is in the ninety percent, I do the.
That counts.
Most aggressive thing.
Yep, that counts as an RNG. All right, let's, let's, let's do some exercises.
Hey, I have a quick argument against RNG.
All right.
RNG is great. When. You need to completely randomize. You, you are not the best player at the table. Other ta, other players are watching you and can exploit any mistake you make. If you're one of the best players at the table. I use. The things that are partial, like maybe fifty percent raise, fifty percent call. I base. I don't use an RNG to make a decision. I base that decision on what gives me the best expectation against my current villain.
Yeah, that makes sense. Always play exploitable. I, I mean exploitive, maximum exploitive, that's what I mean.
Yeah, but then you don't need to, yeah. You don't use RNG then.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
All right, do we wanna start running the trainer bit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, who wants to have a go?
I'm gonna log off. You guys.
All right, y'all.
Okay.
See you next time. Um. Nobody wants to.
Yeah, you wanna start skate?
All right, so. So you are. So this is set up guys so that we're always in UTG and this is SRP, what we just looked at the reports for. And you are, you are flattered in the button, usually be the button, sometimes will cut off and I don't, but mostly it'll be the button. What you reckon?
Uh, you said, okay, where the, where the button yet? Uh, most, okay.
No, sorry, we're in UTG.
Okay.
So you're out of position in a single raise pot against button.
Okay, so. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right.
What you gonna do?
What we're gonna do, to to to, I believe this is probably gonna be a. Maybe. Keep seeing chat, maybe um, more, more, keep seeing chat, more betting than checking, um. Probably gonna bet uh, on the smaller side. Let's go with. Hmm, probably thirty-three percent. Um. Can we go bigger on a paired board? I don't think we need to. Yeah, thirty-three percent mostly bet with some checking.
Okay. What else, what do you guys think?
I'm in check call for this end. Larry, is this fifty NL or five hundred NL?
So this is five hundred and out and the reason I made it five hundred and out is because I wanted to hopefully get some flats from cutoff and hijack. Because um. I think we all see that a lot in games. And obviously solver's not gonna, not gonna give us any flats and cut off an hijack. It's just gonna give us uh. Flats in the button. So I made it five hundred and out, so hopefully we can get a couple flats and cut off a hijack.
Excellent, okay.
All right, so. Well played, sir.
I think our blocker property is really nice here too. With the king. Like there's not, like king, queen would be one of the best hands that he has. There's not range and there's only gonna be one combo of king, queen available to him now. So I think that's another.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I also didn't think about uh whether if we had a spade or not, maybe, since we don't have a spade, we could do. A lot more checking there, whatever, anyways. Um, what's the flush?
Yeah, it turns kinda shitty.
Yeah, enough uh straights come in, right? Everything comes in, I guess. Um, I imagine we're gonna do a lot of, yeah, like I said, instead, we're gonna do a lot of uh. A lot of checking here in a paired board. Straights, flushes. Yeah, I thi- I think it's gonna do checking.
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna be doing a lot here.
Hmm.
Hold on to this check. He checks back.
Hmm.
Checks back. Well. Since they checked back on the turn, I don't believe they have many value hands, um. I think we're gonna do, we, we are gonna check back river a large portion of the time, but. Sugar. Can we go for ten value? I think we're gonna go like not large, maybe. Like bets, sorry, I can see. Bet six point five maybe, um, some portion.
Anybody else doing anything different here?
Sure.
I like the check. We have a marginal made hand, we're, we're just. Who doesn't wanna see the showdown? I just wanna see the showdown at this point.
Okay. Yeah, so uh, let's go for, he's, you know, ostensibly capped here. Excuse me. He checked turn. I think we might use some blocker sizing here. But let's see how we do. We wanna do a blocker sizing here.
Smaller.
But let's see how he, yeah, so what you gonna do now?
Fold. I fold a hundred percent of the time.
It's never a hundred percent versus solver.
Okay, but like in my player pool, no one check raise bluffs me. Like, like raise bluffs on the river. So, but I'm not playing against Phil Ivy, so I don't know, but I'd fold a hundred percent of the time here.
Skate, what are you gonna do, man?
Ah. Well, intuitively, I, I feel like folding. I know.
In your games, do you ever get bluff on the river?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah. Some. Absolutely. And 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 I play fifty, I play uh, playing in the fifty NL and the one hundred NL online. I get bluff on the river. Not a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta, I mean, Sir Derek, we gotta think about this in terms of theory, right? So, so population may never bluff this long, but. Does uh, the solver ever bluff this long? Is the question here.
He does.
So um, I think we gotta fold from uh. From skate, is that right?
Let's go with uh. Uh, eighty-five percent fold and uh. Send, send, yes, yeah. Oh, wow, look at that.
So. I wonder what, I think this must be derived from. Well, number one, we did a blocker sizing, just gonna allow him to have more bluffs.
But Phil Ivy would shove here, eh?
Yeah, see, yeah, so blocker sizing, here's your bluff.
I was about to say call for that. Wow.
So we, we bluffed his bluff.
Uh, quick question on that before we go into the next hand. Our sizing on, our, our sizing on the river when we block sized, did it have a smaller block size also? Did it have a three big blind one or was it only the six big blind?
It was, that was, yeah, that was the blocker sizing. It went from that to B sixty.
Okay.
So, so the, the correct play here would be to shove it all in and then.
At some frequency against, in theory, right? So I think we, we all can. We all surmise that this is probably an error against population. But. Solver's gonna find this, right?
Population's never gonna raise the sevens here.
Yeah.
That's what I say, like, like, like. I don't think recreational players has the balls to shove sevens in here in our face.
Yep, no. No, but the lesson though is, is that.
Like, that, when you're on this river spot, you're gonna turn some hands that you don't intuitively think are bluff hands. Into bluffs here as the imposition player. Like, could you, like, you just don't have a lot. Because I wrote, like, what's the bluff here? Like, I was trying to think, like, if there's an ace of spades hand. X offsuit that we would have and it's really hard to come up with one.
Mm-hmm.
So he found a very low frequency bluff here, right? So we.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's it. Yeah.
So Phil Ivy can turn this into a bluff, but I can't. And I don't think most of the people in my population can.
Right, exactly. That, you're, you're confirming the thing you said earlier and we agree with that. But we're looking at both things. How to play against, so when we do this, it's a really good idea to say against population unfolding and against solver, this is what I think I need to do. And you wanna be right on both of those.
So.
There's value.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Against an, there is value in learning to play against an unexploitable opponent and that's what we're gonna work on now.
So if we look at where his buffs come from, so this is. Filtered for trash hands, right? So it's putting these under pairs on this one out into the trash hands bucket. And we can see it's some very low frequency solver's going to turn his under pairs into bluffs. Right? It's not very often. But it's gonna do it. So the, this, these are his imposition bluffs versus. Uh. A blocker sizing, which makes sense, right? So then if we look at. Solvers whole theory. We can see he's got solver in equilibrium. In solver world. He's gonna raise with his best hands, which are his houses. But he's gonna have to balance that with bluffs there, which we see here, right?
Yeah.
So, we just hit a very low frequency play.
Oh, that's really interesting.
Uh. So technically, what happened here is it solver rolled two. Put, insert your word here, F us.
Do you guys do this in, in, in the wild?
Are.
Do which? Turn the sevens into a bluff or rebluff?
Balance your range so that you, you, you have some of your trash sevens in bluffs here?
We try to.
Do you do this in the wild?
We try to.
Uh. Nah, I, I, I try, but like I don't find it as much as. It's really hard to do it like you have to like, yeah, it's. I think solver found it because we, we, by the way, we played the turn and we checked turn and our sizing on the river is what I'm guessing.
Like, this is very interesting because I think that in my game, I never do this.
Well, I think that's fine. I think.
Try it, try it.
You know, I'll find this rarely, but it'll be. When I have blockers to the nuts, it's very hard to have blockers to the nuts on this paired board with a flush.
Sarah, did you ever go, do. Ever go to pokercoaching.com?
Yeah, that's how I find this.
Do, do you have a membership or do you use the free?
Uh, uh, I, I just found it, so I, I use the free.
Okay.
Like, like I just stumbled into this group.
Larry, can I share for a second to show him a tool? Larry, can I share for a second to show him a tool?
Sure.
I used, oh. Don't wanna share yet. Alright, so. Now I wanna share. I use this tool a lot. Like, when you go to pokercoaching.com, I have the membership, so this is my first page. I don't know what your first page.
Yeah, my first page looks like that.
Okay. On the left side, there's tools.
Okay.
Click that. Um.
Uh huh.
And then range analyzer. If you go down to tools, you'll see the access. A lot of tools you get for free.
Yep.
So go to the rain and analyze, range analyzer. And I do, I do this, like a post flop aggressor. Then I put my whole range in, and I list out what I'm value betting, what I'm bluffing with, what I'm gonna check call, when I'm gonna check fold. And then I do the board out and I run it all the way down to the river. And figure out what bluffs I have on the river. What value hands I have on the river. And I go, I do this exercise about. It takes about an hour and a half to do one hand thoroughly.
Okay.
And I do this once a week just to. So I can sit and figure out without the use of the solver. What is gonna be in my range? Then I check it against the solver. Which. Even if you don't have a paid version, you can get one free. Solution per day on G T O Wizard at a hundred big blinds.
Okay.
So then you could set up your range and double check all your actions with every hand in your range. On the server to see how you did.
Oh, okay, that's, that's very cool. So you're making the most of your one golden ticket.
Yeah.
And then I have the free, I have a premium. I could do it thousands times a day if I had the time to. But to do, go through a hand that in depth takes a. It's a long time and it takes a lot of mental work.
Okay.
So I'm, you're pretty like mentally exhausted by the time I'm done that.
Yeah. And on the general thing here, you're saying, do we try to find these bluffs? If you were at my table. And I had, and I had concluded because you had either told me beforehand how you played, or I observed that you fold. To the raise, to the check raises on the river and the raises on the river, because everybody at the table. Only does that with the nuts. Then anytime you're in the hand, I'm going to look for, is this a good hand for me to check raise with nothing? Or to raise you with nothing, because I know you're pulled a hundred percent of the time, except if you really have it. So what I'm gonna look at is not how good my hand is, I'm gonna look at my hand and says, and say, does it block the nuts? The one hand I know you're gonna have to call with, and if it does, that's an exploit against you. Just you.
Right.
And so. You know, as long as no one at your table is doing that, you don't have to adjust to it. And you can continue to fold to their strong aggression on the river a hundred percent of the time, and that'll be profitable. But once one of us figures that out. We're gonna be looking for a lot of these bluffs. Now, the sevens was not a good bluff because the sevens didn't. Block, did the sevens block any of the nuts on that hand? Was there a straight even there?
No, I mean, no, it's.
Yeah, sevens were, the sevens were crazy. But there were a ton of bluffs there. That all I gotta look at and say is, do I have an ace of spades to block the nut flush? Yes, do I have, you know, am I blocking? One, uh, you know, do I have a pair that blocks your full house? Yes, great. Those would be, those would be good hands for me to bluff.
Okay.
But I don't think the king jack was. Because the king jack had showdown value.
Skate, you wanna do one more?
You did half the time. Alright, moving on.
Uh sure.
Okay. Kind of a similar situation, but a very different board texture.
Uh, yeah, they're gonna have um. Yes, same situation. Yeah, they're definitely gonna have a lot more H here. Um, we're gonna. I think we're gonna check a lot, check larger portion of the time. And and bet some thirty-three, maybe like, yeah, check seventy more.
It's a pure check.
Pure check.
Yeah. I think if we, I think, yeah, we just don't have enough going here. Uh, I'm gonna look at you. Real quick. I'm gonna cheat. Yeah, we can see the other sport is mostly just checking.
Have you ever done? Um, a homework? With Jonathan?
Uh, I've only done one. And I was, I procrastinated.
Do it more, Skate, they're great.
Do it more, and it helps you, it helps you get to the point where you start thinking about these hands where you can. Like, look at it right away and say, oh yeah, this goes into my junk range.
Yeah, no, I, I was a member for, for long, for, for a while. But that's, that's part of my, my problem, it is my problem, uh procrastination.
Can you view the, do you have to be a member to see all the homeworks?
You can look at them, I think. You just can't attend the weather.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Alright, he, he comes at you with the small one, small bet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still on, um. No spade, two overs. No spade, two overs. No spade, two overs, paired board. Uh. No spade is leading me to fold. I, I think we're gonna fold. We have no spade paired board. I think we're gonna fold the white call.
Yeah, we won't really have anything going on in this part. We don't even have any size, so I think.
You have vector straight. But that's not enough.
True.
Just, just when we're listing what we have.
Okay. Um. Who wants to do some more?
I'm up. I'm fine.
Alright, sure. Queens, King high board. Disconnected. You're in a quandary, you're against cutoff this time, which is a much more condensed range than button.
I'm betting small here.
Okay. It's, yeah. You, you check. I wonder if you get bets here because of this disconnected nature and King high?
I'd say it's check seventy-five, bet small, twenty-five.
I think this is the poster child for checking.
Okay. Because of the hand class?
Cause of the king.
Yeah, it's one pair under a tough pair.
What about the uh texture?
Texture is good, texture is good for, texture is good.
Texture is good. King high is usually good for the out of position player.
Uh, okay, so, but we can bet, you wanted to bet small, right?
Yep.
So I, I think this texture just, just is gonna give us some bets. He folds his. He folds this little frequency set line. Alright, one more, a couple more, Derek?
Yep.
Alright, overpair. More generally good for imposition, I think.
We're betting?
Alright, what size would you like, sir?
I'd, like, this is, like. Pretty good for his range. But I'm happy with the overpair. So I'm betting like. Small. Frequently.
Okay.
Oh, no, very bad.
Should we just?
How could that be bad?
Not, not bad. Don't just be mistaken, that's not bad.
Yeah, agreed.
Why is that not bad?
There's a better, because there's a, not, there's not, because there's a better choice, and the better choice is to put this in your check range. Is to check raise, I'm sorry, I said check range, check raise.
Yeah, 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 check raise.
Because you miss this board so often that he, that he will feel free to check, to bet this board very often, and you will get more money in with your, with your.
Ah, okay, yeah, yeah, I like that.
Play it, but when he checks, I, let's, let's watch this and, and. And see, see solver do that.
Yeah, so this is, we can see this is a very, this is a high check board, right? So the way solver's thinking, especially on flop. Is that. It's. Going to use. A strategy that is best for its range. And it's gonna spread that across all of its range, even its best hands, and best hands are nines. See how much nines are checking? Fives are checking, even though they're unblocking the nines. Um, and that's just because um. This texture. Is. Very good for imposition. We can confirm that by looking here at range versus range. And we can see button has a little bit of a range advantage here. Um, okay, so, but we can bet, it's, you're still within solver parameters, I guess. And so, yeah, so he's gonna punish. He's gonna say, this ain't your board, this is my board.
How would I play this? What you gonna do?
Um. I, I'm gonna call. Or raise.
Yes, well, I should call it.
Yep.
Why would you raise?
Cause I don't believe. If you should raise that hand before, wha- what's the size of that raise and, and why, you know?
Yeah, why?
Um. I, I just don't believe him.
Yeah, okay, yeah. It's pretty good, the reason.
No, no, don't. I don't believe him is not.
Good reason.
Yeah, there's, there's something behind your, you don't believe it, right? There's, there's a logic behind that thought you're having. I don't believe you. Well, there's a reason you don't believe him.
So what is that, what is that reason?
I thought he had, like. What, what hands am I scared of? I don't think he has five, nine, nine, two.
Pocket nine?
I don't think he, I don't, there's not that many two pairs that he could have. He could have sets.
Yes.
Yes, exactly, so what?
How many overpairs is in his range?
Well, I don't think aces, kings and queens are in his overrange.
He never has queens?
Not in my player pool, but maybe Phil Ivy would have queens. So he has nines and he has like tens and jacks. But I don't think he has jacks, so. Cause he blocked jacks, so. I don't believe him.
Okay, one other question? I don't believe him is, is, is a reasonable thing here, but you know, your reasoning, your reasoning is that he doesn't have two pairs, so all he's got are the sets. And he doesn't have a lot of overpairs. That's, that's, that's.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's fine. Well, is, I don't believe him. What makes you, what, what are you using to decide between calling and re-raising it? Just what's the reason? And, and there is a good reason to call and not re-raise. I just want you to say it out loud for everybody.
You might be behind?
Right, so you might believe, you don't believe him, but you might be wrong.
Yep.
That's one. Is there another reason to not, not raise him if you don't believe him?
We don't wanna have a huge pot with one pair.
Well, yep, and we don't have to. We don't have to. If we're right, we're ahead.
The other issue is that if you raise him, what's he gonna do with his six, seven? And what's he gonna do with his? No equity bluffs.
Can I go back what I was trying to say?
Yeah.
About I don't believe him?
Yep.
Alright. Take that deeper. What you're saying is I don't believe he has a balanced value range. So you're saying that the solver. Is not that. Balancing any of his bluffs with hands like not pocket nines, pocket fives, pocket twos?
Well, I think fuck, those are all in his range, yeah.
So when you're saying I don't believe him, you are saying that he's unbalanced towards bluffs.
I guess, I guess that's right, yeah, that's the way of looking at it.
That's just not true when you.
Yeah, I guess Phil Ivy doesn't do that, yeah.
May, maybe I'm picking apart your wording. But. It's just the terminology you, it's like you're talking in absolutes with it, like a lot of things you say, you're talking in absolutes.
Yep.
And I'm just trying to start you open, opening up your thinking to get away from these absolute thoughts.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, you have to consider whether he's balanced or not. Is he value heavy or is he bluff heavy if he's not balanced?
Yeah, that's right.
And I could just tell you right off the bat that the solver is balanced.
A hundred percent.
A lot more balanced than uh Phil Ivy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so um Derek, you've. You've called his raise, uh you get a non-repeat time, which is really interesting, so. You are now out of position. I assume you're gonna check?
Yep. Hundred percent probably. Oh.
This is a uh.
Very bad.
This is, this is a equity shifting card.
So he has fewer nines in his hand.
We're turning this into our bluff, right? So let's just look and see. How much we dunk this? Um, now. If you guys find this play against somebody in position races you. You're more than a, more of a player than I am. This is mad.
Well, I, 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 I see enough to be doing everything wrong.
Well, this is a pretty solver centric play.
I think we might be betting almost range on the turn.
And.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so this really shifts equity, cause so much of our. So much of our bet call range is composed of nines. Um, but. It's hard for me to find this in game. Uh, maybe other people do, but I, I. Never.
Wow.
Dunking into an imposition raiser after he. Imposition raises on flop, docking turn. I, I would argue against um population. That's really, really dangerous.
Especially when it's this top, top, uh, top card pairing. It's like kind of heavily weighted towards a lot of nine X combos. It's kind of strange to see.
So we could see why in theory this makes sense. When the repeat nine comes. Right now, we are very much in the lead because who has, look at our trips versus imposition, right? So in theory, this makes total sense. Oh, this is an incredibly equity shifting card.
We have way more nines than he does.
Twice as many trips than imposition. We're always gonna dunk this. But I would argue that in, I mean, somebody could disagree with me, but I would argue that in game, this is. Highly, highly risky.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's insane. I think that the way that I think about poker might be entirely wrong lots of times.
I don't know that, that solver, I, so you're probably, you know, you. You probably learn mostly from doing and experiencing poker.
Yeah.
And I think that's fine. Theory is just a different approach. I don't know. I mean, we've all. The way I look at it, and you guys might have something to add, but. Theory is teaching us the mechanics, right? So these are the mechanics of theory. The mechanics are when this nine comes. This card shifts equity to us because it's so good for our range that it's going to take this line where we bet, get raised and call. So in theory, this.
Way more nines than he does.
Now, I'm trying to apply that to how population plays, and I would say this is one example where this play is poor against population.
Not, not always.
Okay, that's fine. That's just my view of it.
Hey Larry.
Yeah, it's just like I said, it. We can't do the, the absolutes, cause there are players in population where I would. Hit this bet. Um.
I would wager that bet gets like folds eight out of ten or nine out of ten times versus population too.
Larry, could you look at the button range?
Sure.
That.
Raises in position?
Yes.
So here is your button raises. Uh, we can look, kind, let's do a breakdown real quick, let's see. So this is his balance range, right? He's got all these buffs here coming from like seven, six. Which I mentioned before. You know, these, all these kind of low. These low equity bluffs that are very hard to find. And then he's got all these like overpairs. There are the queens that Joey mentioned, right?
Yep.
There are sets. And then he's, he's um slow playing a lot with his nines, which is part of the reason that maybe. Solver gets to make this play. Um. Okay, go back to strategy, and so let's just, so here is raises. Anything, any particular combo you wanna look at? Sutton?
No, I was just kind of curious about. No, I was just kind of curious about the jack nine combos, because we have the jacks and I didn't, I was kind of curious to see how much. I thought maybe, cause I I thought that we did not have jack nine, ten, nine, or really queen nine. In our, in our nine ranges, but I, at five hundred L L, we did have those. So I was just kind of curious if their defending range on the button included jack nine a lot more and maybe us having the jacks to block that as one of their possible combos that raised us or something.
I see your point.
Trying to, I I wasn't really sure.
Yeah, so I, yeah, so with the nines, I guess what he's doing is he's, he's raising at some frequency with the top of range. And then with top, top. And sometimes with nine eight. But um, you know, we don't know what he has obviously, but he's got. Yeah, he's obviously, he's, he's solvency is doing us the entire range.
But yeah, this is like a, a more difficult, like I think that one of the things that we're trying to have a lot of conversations about is between theory and in-game. And like, in-game, are guys with flush draws going to raise here? I would, I would say probably not. And I would say guys that have value would be scared of flush draws and have more value. Which I think sort of skews how we wanna respond.
Well, you, you have to look at every opponent separately. Um, you have to know your opponent. Cause to me, what the nine says is if the opponent is balanced or close to balance, even, e- even if they try, if they're, if they're raising some of their spade draws as, as a bluff, semi bluff, which some players will, even in population. The nine, seeing the nine skews their original flop range towards bluffs. Because now it blocks.
The nine nine in the.
A large part of his value range that he would have value raised on the flop. So when I, I think of things numerically and statistically when I play poker, I'd see the nine, I know it shifts his range to more bluffs than value. If that player is capable of bluffs.
You're saying when the nine comes on our turn, there's left ninth in the deck, so less chances of them having that nine, is what you're saying?
Yeah, i- it blocks a large portion of their flop value range. That's, that's why against the balanced range like the solver had, we get to go nuts with this card.
Yeah. So it, that's theory, right? And then what you have to kind of integrate that with is how often is population bluff raising this imposition?
Yeah, i- if your opponent is only value raising and never bluffing, don't do the, don't dunk with this.
Or more specifically, if the opponent is raising most or all of their nines on the flop and some of their flush draws, the specific hands, so if they're, if they've got tens or jacks here. Turning this into a bluff is not a bad idea. Well, sorry, tens is is a terrible idea. Sorry, if they've got queens here, turning this into bluff is not a terrible idea. But if this is a player who doesn't check, who doesn't just call with their nines, but raises all their nines, this becomes very bad idea.
Well, I think the jacks are part of the value range.
So I think that, I think sixty-nine percent equity does fall into value.
Value, that's value.
Once this card, once this repeat nine comes.
Great, okay.
Alright.
But we checked.
Alright, Dick. Checking is fine.
Well, not fine, but.
And he checked on.
And then he checks back and look at your, now you have choices.
We wanna get all the money in.
Okay.
What's the best way to get all the money in, is what I'm thinking?
Okay.
I'm just thinking Vegas on the Mirage here at this point.
So the one thing to keep in consideration is that perhaps he is checked. He, he checked turn. He knows the, the, he knows in theory that this card is very good for you. The turn was very good for you, sorry. So he checked.
Yep. So. We don't think he has any nines at this point, do we?
Nope.
No, he does. He has, he has nines. If he's gonna have a checking range, he's gonna protect his checking range with some nines.
You mean nine X or do you mean?
In the wild, do you ever see you guys with nines show up here?
Do you mean nine X or a pair of nines?
Yeah, nine X.
A low, a little bit of both.
Yep. So we can extract value from nines, but what else can we, can we extract value from, we can extract value from a flash, I guess, but.
Yeah, in the wild, I don't think they're protecting their check range, so that we're gonna see a lot of betting with their, with the button strips on the flush draw board. I think they would not have checked.
I agree with.
Yeah, this is a very interesting situation, right?
Not against the solver, but against, against population, I think that they are, they are devoid of nines. I think they have a fair amount of flushes here. And.
So we could extract value from flushes.
How do, how do we get most money? And I think it's, I think it's the check raise. I think he bets. I think he bets all the flushes.
I agree.
And unless he has the ace side flush, he doesn't raise our bet on the river, cause we can have the ace side flush.
But Derek, it's your dream hand. You get to, you get to pick. The peanut gallery in the chat is giving you all our opinion.
I li- I like checking here. I I think that I wanna check raise.
Yes.
Come on, come on, button bet, do it.
Do it for us. There we go.
There we go.
Dream comes true.
Too small.
Now the button doesn't get big bets after the jack of spades hits.
What sizing would you like to? How would you like to punish buttons bet?
I'd like to bet a hundred, but that's not an option.
You can go all in.
I guess we could, I like, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I can't see him calling. Is he gonna call all in with a flush?
Uh, do you have any bluff shops, bluff check shops?
In real life, never, but not, but I think that if I were a bot playing another bot, I would.
In theory, you have, you have bluff shops, right?
Yeah, okay, I'm shoving it in then.
Yay.
If I had the, if I had the ace of spades, I would be shoving it in.
So you, we extracted max value from threes. Yep. Alright, thank you, Dick. Um, so should we do this for, what do you guys wanna do? Another couple minutes of trainer or do you wanna go to Mark Tans?
Let's do a little bit more trainer.
I only have about a half hour left.
Okay.
Alright, so dream hand, he wants to take it.
Nobody?
I will bet. I will.
Draw straws.
We have, I'm always betting here.
Locked up. Oh, okay, you take it, Derek.
Who's, who's taking?
Derek's taking it.
Well, does someone else wanna take it? Like, I'm be, I'm betting frequently and small here.
Okay.
Yeah, same.
So I think we see this sometimes where you've got a lot of choices when you essentially have locked up equity.
Yeah.
What would you guess your equity is here? I'm gonna guess your equity is ninety-five percent. It's, if it, it's not that hard to know, it's in the nineties, let's say, real quick. And also this is, yeah, we can see this is a range by board, uh, equity. Yeah, what is it? King queen we have?
Yeah.
Ninety-two percent.
Yeah.
So. Okay, you bet small, right?
Yep, frequently and small.
He's not, he's not, alright. Okay, anybody else wanna take one?
I'll take one. Check. Bet uh, bet four point nine.
Yeah, I.
Nope.
I think we're going to let AC bet you do the small, cause the, the three liner just hit.
Gotcha, alright.
Bet small?
Ah, yeah, it's bits, but it's at least closer to, closer to what I said, cause I'm not checking it. He calls. And this is one of my worst hands. He does have draws that didn't get there. I don't block them, but that's enough. I'm gonna bet and so let's go for the sixty and the, the six point five and the fourteen point five. In reality, I'm going to bet ten, so this time I'm going to bet the six point five.
So yeah, upper band of aggressive, but.
Yeah.
That's probably better. And we get here and buy.
The ten.
Alright, another one.
Long, but very fast.
Top pair.
Top pair, I like top. And looking at the board. Is this a, is this a board where we're betting range? So this is gonna split checks and bets, and because I have the king and there's no flush draw, I'm gonna choose to check this one. I think that there are bets and when the bets, and I think those bets are uh, thirty-three.
I'd agree with that. I'm, I'm fine with betting. I bet, but that's fine.
I mean, yeah, and I'm checking this time because not only do I have the jack, but specifically with the king. The only cards I don't wanna see particularly are a queen and ace, and that's a few enough that I don't mind letting this be the one that I put in the check raise range, and I'm gonna check raise.
Okay, I was gonna ask you.
So you're checking to check raise, is that what you're doing?
Yep, and now I'm going to raise, and I'm gonna raise the I'll do the, I'll do the fifty, I'll do the fifty percent raise. I'll raise to seven point five five, that's fine. Okay.
Yeah, if you're in there, upper band of aggressive, that's you're in there.
Yep.
Calls you. So gutter gets there.
Yeah, that's not a good card for me, for my hand. But no backdoor flush came in. So now I'm going to go to check call.
Why, why do you check calling?
I'll tell, call.
This six is horrible for us.
Yeah, I'll tell you why in a second.
Cause it hits his range so much?
It, so the, the is, when he calls me with, so what is he calling me with on this board, once I've check raised him? He's calling me with hands that have me crushed when he has his pocket fives and his pocket sevens and his rare pocket jacks. He's calling me with a jack and on the button, he has ace, jack and queen, jack. He doesn't have a lot of ten jacked, maybe ten jacked suited, doesn't have nine jack. So I'm sort of roughly splitting against the jacks, so I don't need to. And when he had a straight draw, his, his gut shot straight draws came in and his other straight draws have a pair now. So. I could, you know, maybe get called by that, but I'm not seeing a lot of hands that, that I beat, that called me on my check raise. But I'm still not folding it, because. So I'm check calling. And and he's al- I'm already folding some here. Alright.
Interesting.
Good, well, this helped, but I wasn't against two pair, I wasn't against a lot of two pairs, so this is still the same hand. Um, so I'm gonna check it again, and I'm gonna check call.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh.
It's a nightmare.
Uh, that's a nightmare, but I am too high in my range, two pair calls here.
So let's talk about that, cause, but you just, cause you just said. Well, the question is, well, let's walk through this real quick. And then we can look at solver. Are you, do you, are you beating value?
Am I beating value? Um, I am beating the seven, five and the s- and the six, seven that he could have. I'm beating the ace, jack, but I don't believe he plays this way, that's the problem.
And do we have any blockers to the nuts?
No, I block no nuts. The nuts is eight nines, the block, the nuts is eight, nine, five, five, seven, seven.
So, yeah, so I think, I think you've, I think you do probably call this because solvers have balanced range and we do beat value.
I fold here in game.
Um, so I think it's theory recall.
He turns over a set or a straight for sure.
Uh, well, again, right? So we're, we're just thinking about theory.
Sure, then it's a, it's a call here in solver land, but.
Yeah, I, but I see, yeah, this is, this is a.
In game, I snap fold.
The solver of two pair here.
So Scotty, you're calling, right?
I'm calling, I have, yeah, this is way too high in my.
So, yeah, we're calling.
Hundred percent call.
It's gotta be a set or a straight, though. Yeah, there's the straight, has to be, has to be.
The nuts, we see the nuts. We call a hundred percent to see the nuts.
So one thing I'm curious about here is, let's just examine this real quick. I'm curious if your equity of two pair is more than your equity of top pair here, right?
So, so if that was a blank, would you still call is what you're saying?
I, I'm just curious, so I'm curious if bluff catcher land, which, where we are. If the equity of our bluff catches for a single pair are this, are the same as our equity for two pair or if.
They probably run pretty close.
They're comparable, they're comparable.
Look how close queen jack is to king jacks.
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda curious about, so.
Yeah.
Button goes all in, so we're here, we make our decision. So what, here it is right here. So what, so our equity of like queen jack? Is thirty-six.
Exactly the same.
And queen jack is very close, king seven.
Yeah, jack ten.
Doesn't make a difference.
So this is really, this is kind of for me an important lesson in bluff catching, in that
Queens are just fine too.
Once we're in the bluff catching category, which we are here. Really, the equity of two pair is not that much different than the equity of ace jack. That would.
Yeah, absolutely.
On this board.
Yeah.
So the other one thing to look at here is just in uh, solver land. So now we're looking at solver's decision on, on river. So he chose all in, which here. And what is he doing with his two pairs? So in, in theory, he has very, the only shows he has and at um, a low frequency is with our hand. But she has it a super low frequency, but we can.
Wow.
He just doesn't have five, and the five, seven, the five, six, they don't do it.
Yeah, so I mean, really it comes down to, I mean, this is kind, we might be exploring theory too deeply here, but this really comes down to where do we beat value? And his, and it looks like we really don't.
I don't think that's exploring too deeply. This comes up a lot and those are important folds to make.
Yeah, we chop value.
Or calls.
Yeah, so, so his, so the only value, so we, the best we could do here in theory is chop. We are still beating all these crazy buffs he has, right? But, but again.
What's that?
We are very much in the land of bluff catcher with not much equity between top pair and two pair.
Yeah, that's.
Go back one second. Just show me, show me the, the first bluff, the highest act, the, the highest equity bluff there that he's got. So down.
Highest equity.
Yeah, they never, that guy, who is that? Do I at least beat that?
A second pair.
I believe I beat something. Okay, there's.
Yeah, you definitely believe, yeah, you definitely beat.
No, I know I beat, I beat the pure bluffs.
You beat everything, you beat all these, right? You beat, so if you, if we looked um, if we looked at strategy.
I guess he has like ten, eight suited. Oh no, he doesn't, okay, but.
Yeah, he's got, he's just got tons of.
No pair.
Trash hands.
Yeah.
And that, that fall into this bucket of all in.
But it beats those ace, queen. I wanna, I wanted to see what, what, that at least I beat something that's pseudo value. I beat his jack nine and his ace.
Third pair, second pair, low pair.
He doesn't do this very often. Look at that. That ace jack is rare thing.
Yeah, and this is important for me to see, because I think I've been having some struggles kind of classifying my bluff catchers, and I think. classifying my bluff catchers. And I think this is a, a good lesson for me that.
For me, that is so clearly set plus set or straight. It's just such an easy fold for me.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Against population, I would say this isn't, you know, we could lean towards folding. Uh, Scotty, you want to do another one, sir?
I love doing this. So if no, if no one else wants it.
So you know, I would say that um, Derek, one thing to think about is you can go out to this website and get an account.
Yeah, I, I just made an account, actually.
And you can do ten of these for free a day.
Okay.
Um, so, okay, sorry. You want to take this?
Kings.
Scotty, still going?
No, I'm that, yeah, I'll go one more. I'll go one more fast. All right.
Yeah, I can do the next one there, Scott.
Um, check.
I usually wait to be volunteered to do these.
Now we check.
Check again. I have, I have showdown value. And do I call once? Stop.
I wonder if we call more with the ace of
Right. No draw, no made hand. I'm gonna, I'm gonna fold and just lose with the best hand. I'm just gonna do that this time. I'm out of position now.
So I'm curious, do you guys think that we call with the ace of hearts with the intention of essentially bluffing a heart river even though it's a paired board?
I like it.
He was ace of heart, ten of heart?
Hey, folded the worst hand. Yes.
Good job, good job.
Hooray.
Actually, that is a good question. If you have ace of heart, ten of heart on the turn, are you saying, would you like, I mean, no one's seen folding, right?
Oh, no, no. I mean, so FD recalling, the question is, if we had the ace of hearts, which is blocking his nut flush draw.
Ah.
Do we cut? I, I'll, well, I'll check that real quick.
But ace, ace of heart, but a ten of not heart is actually.
Yeah, yeah, ace of hearts, ten of clubs. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I was like, I was like, I'll make sure I get the question right.
Turn, check, keep bets here.
And I'm betting ace and hearts here.
So we, we, so under the gun.
I don't know.
So we're, we are ace of hearts. Yeah, we're just, we're not really playing that game.
Yep.
Well, yeah, we're just gonna fold.
Yeah.
Paired boards here.
Yeah, we need a spade.
Um, all right. Uh, let's do one and then we'll.
I can do one. I'm good.
All right, King, you've got runner board, you got queen jack. Wrong color.
Yeah. Okay. So I know in game I end up betting small here and taking it down the vast majority of the time. I bet, I bet a third in game. I might, I might be way off in my theory right here though. But I bet a third. Yeah, it's in there.
You're within parameters, sir.
And it gets the fold. There, that's what happens.
Very well.
Yeah.
Nineteen percent score.
All right, here's a more interesting one. You got top pair rainbow board, dried square flop.
Can I run one? I have to leave.
Yeah.
Yep.
You can do this one. I'll do next.
Okay. Uh, yeah. So I mix here. I think I lean mostly towards checking, maybe bet like twenty percent, twenty-two percent, something like that.
This is kind of, I mean, I
Check eighty, seventy.
I don't know about a board that's dry. I don't know.
I don't know about betting small here.
I would bet large, slightly larger if I did bet, but I check like eighty percent or so. Sixty-six. Okay.
Why are you checking? Like, what's the thing, thought behind checking?
Uh, position has a lot to do with it here. A mix of pot control, a mix of check raising versus certain opponents and just a mix of check calling and then looking at drastically texture changing uh, turns or not texture changing turns. And there's a lot of different ways this can go. Um, I don't think it's really you probably could check raise here, but I think I actually prefer the call. It's very difficult to get a check, a call from anything you check raise here.
I like.
That you want to get a call with. Yeah, so definitely call.
Yeah, makes sense.
Both are good. I was on team raise.
I like it too.
Yeah.
Uh, so three of diamonds here. I'm going to be checking again, going to be check calling most of my range here. Goes check, check. We are
Four liner, interesting.
Doesn't have a, on a five X, he's got. Uh, yeah, I think this is good enough to go for value and get a call from like pocket sevens, pocket eights. And in game I go exactly a hundred percent pot, but I think sixty percent bet five point five. I like a check.
No, for a four liner, you don't want to.
Just, I'm not overly scared of five X here. And when he hits you with some ridiculous raise, when it's clear that he has some five X, like you can get away from it. And you're just going to be getting a call from his pocket sevens, pocket eights, pocket nines.
You did better than the solver.
So the question, so one quick, quick thing to look at is when this four liner comes in.
With that very well, that very likely is a leak in my game.
Where is our betting threshold? So, so when this four liner comes on this line, right? Check, bet, call, check, check, turn. Four liner comes in on turn. We're here.
Hmm. I guess he does have a fair amount of five X. Okay.
Where is our betting threshold?
Okay, I was looking at that. I'm just like not particularly scared of a five, but I guess he does have a pretty fair number of combos with all the six, six, five suited and five, five combos.
So we're like blocker with, with hot parallel here. And then
Sorry, it leads like with a small blocker bet?
When it goes check, check, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
It looks like, I mean, all this, this middle region. And it's got buffs, obviously.
I love my blocker bets. I think that that combo might be, might have been just a little bit too strong for a blocker bet.
Yeah, because
But maybe not with the four liner.
It did the jack ten. It did the worst tens.
Yeah, okay. Oh, oh, okay, okay, okay.
The thing you had in mind makes total sense. Look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Do it. Just ace ten doesn't.
Okay. Yeah. So I stand by my decisions and that. I like how I played that.
Yeah, maybe the thing I take away from this is that um, when it goes check, check on turn, even though a four liner comes, solver's still gonna have a pretty hardy bluffing range here of a large size.
Hmm.
Hmm.
My intention was to be check calling those turns.
Yep.
Yeah, I wouldn't, you would never think of check folding, right?
No, no, no. I mean, unless it's some uber fish that just rips a hundred big blinds.
Yeah.
Usually like an eight.
Yeah, I was check folding to a, a reasonable bet, a good sized bet.
Okay.
And I, I got one that's not gonna do much. Check.
You want the fireworks?
No, that's interesting.
You got what you wanted.
Check.
I like it. I like it a lot.
They better than
Why, what's the thinking behind the check?
To get buttoned.
There, there's all already a straight on board and my kicker sucks.
Yeah, so what we've seen a lot
I will have better premium hands to bet as opposed to this.
Okay, so this is just like
Seen a lot in our, um, studies is that betting here is going to be driven often by the value of your kicker. We can check that though. Um, okay, so he bets into you big. It's just like a B seventy, B seventy-five.
I'm gonna call. Oh my God, how much is already folding?
That's silly.
I think this is really, this must be
What's the thinking behind the fold here?
That's kind of
Pretty big bet, I guess. I mean, it's
It's kind of silly in my opinion.
But you can fold there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at it. So, um, this ten is interesting. Do you, do you see this ten as a good card or a bad card, Joey?
I think the flush changes, um, switches equity. So we're gonna have, I'm, we're gonna have some bets on this river. I don't know if ace, seven and diamonds is in that grouping of bets.
Turning top pair into a bluff.
I think I'm going to check.
What do you think about a blocker bet there, Joey? Like a ten percent? I know it wasn't an option, but that's probably what I'd find in game.
You just check back straight. That's great.
I was thinking, but I, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
So this must be, so your call to that sizing must be so, uh, backdoor FD strong, backdoor FD, um, heavy that he checks back his straight.
I mean, there, there's a straight and a flush on board.
And also it's a paired board.
Hmm.
And a paired board. So ace seven, I don't think has enough value to block a bet because you have to remember.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. That makes sense.
A blocker bet and a thin value bet are identical things.
Yep, yep, for sure. It would be blocker bet with the intention to fold if he came over the top, right? So
Yeah.
Probably makes it a bad blocker, but
It's a thin value bet too, so it has to get worse to call.
Yeah, for sure.
See much worse calling that bet.
So one thing here, I think
Queen ten, like.
So on turn it brings in the king, queen, right? And we're checking our, our turned ace. And we could see here that if we look at top pair, the question is, I mean, so straight came in and another question is, how much is this behavior driven by kicker? And we can see that it is driven somewhat by kicker, maybe a lot, right?
A hundred percent.
It's super, it's super linear depending on kicker, how much we're betting when this ace comes in on turn.
Yep.
With our top pair. Depending on kicker, right? So that, we've seen this over and over again in solver. Uh, with top pair and I would argue maybe the fragility of top pair depending on kicker. Um,
Not withstanding Interesting that it doesn't, it's interesting that it doesn't polarize with the weaker kickers either. It's very, very much just linear according to kicker.
When he bets, let's see, because we, we were folding our ace seven. Let's see how much the kicker plays into our fold.
Yeah, that's a good question. So he bets big, right? Does it be seventy-five?
Yeah, with the nuts, I'd like to point out. Jerk.
True.
True.
Very driven by kicker, right? There also might be some blocking properties here too, right? So
Well, ace, king doesn't have the same blockers as ace, queen.
Yep.
Yeah.
So do you guys think this is, this is probably driven, well, we've got a gut shot, but also we're blocking nuts, right? So I would imagine, yeah, we're calling this pure. Like, if we look at like the EV of this compare it to like ace nine, maybe like two, three, two, three, and it just drops. Yeah, this gut shot slash blocker is so important.
Yeah, one of those top pairs where it's very much still a marginal holding.
Um,
I'm guessing with ace, seven suited, you need spades.
Yep, yep.
Makes sense.
Uh, this is interesting. Anything else look good on this hand, guys? Well, the other thing to think about is where his
It went check, check.
Um, I'm curious where his betting threshold is here.
I, I was contemplating if he bets the river, that I gotta fold.
Actually, yeah, that's interesting to see.
So his most, um, common sizing is a B seventy-five, right? So we'll give him that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I'd have to fold the ace seven to that.
I would think so.
I agree. You are
Your call was already very strong on a turn, so he's not gonna bluff with like very, it's not gonna have a ton of bluffing.
So it looks like, yeah, you wanna, you're folding, blocking his busted FD pure. And you're doing a little bluff catching with your ace seven.
Yeah, but it's indifferent.
And a tiny bit of rebluffing.
Yeah, that makes a lot of theoretical sense.
There's the rare rebluff with eight, rebluff with top pair because that ace seven is a bluff.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's rare.
And then blocking the straight. We're, we're indifferent to ace queen. This is interesting. So if we get here with ace queen, even though we're blocking the straight, ace queen of spades, which is blocking the busted FD, is folding.
Right.
I'm curious from a, from a live perspective, like if you're the person holding the, 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 the straight and, and you face somebody who blasts you on, on like all in shovel or a big bet on the river, how many of us like will, will, will routinely fold, uh, king, queen? Maybe if you
Why, why do you make me think about these nightmare spots?
Well, that's, that's, but you think of both sides, right? If, if
I know.
So he doesn't have any shoves here because this is he doesn't have any shows here, but because you checked, maybe that's why. But his biggest size is B one fifty. So the question is, do we fold a straight? So if he, if he, we are indifferent with our strength. So these are, yeah, we're indifferent.
Yep.
I'm fine folding it in the games that I play, but that's, like you say, it's totally exploitable.
Yeah, so in theory, we call at higher frequency blocking the backdoor flush. And then we fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's pretty
Makes sense, yeah.
Black and white theoretically sound.
So basically, if you have a, a, a heart, you, 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 you call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Call with a heart, fold with that one.
So do you guys want to move on to lock hands?
Sure.
To our final hour here? Okay, so I'm gonna
I have one
Do whatever you guys want to do.
Okay.
Just because hold on. Poker tracker, poker tracker. Only because we talked about this last week and I just happened to find in my database. It was exactly this hand. Remember this one? There was a limp, there was a limp and then the guy raised to four big blinds yesterday and we were all discussing what our size would be. And there's
Oh yes, I remember.
And there, there it is. And now here's your choice of going multi-way.
Scotty, do you mind making the replay out here?
Yeah, make it bigger. Yeah. So the only reason this hand is interesting is because we were talking about it yesterday. What's up?
Yeah, sixteen to twenty or fifteen to twenty.
We're talking about this.
It was this one. The only difference was in that one, there was a limp and then a raise and a call. And we only had two. And now I've got, I've already got the call there, but, but it's similar enough.
And so this is a weird one.
That's what I did.
Yeah. That's pretty much what we settled on.
Yeah, so
Oh, interesting.
And then he made it, and then he made it easier for me. Because he said, because he said, okay, now we're gonna be heads up.
Yep.
And so I didn't jam and then he jammed. And that's just fine. And it's
It's gotta be kings. Has to be kings. Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is also another lesson in this. So his clickback?
Yeah.
Is not it, right?
Oh, hundred percent. No question.
He's just making sure, his clickback here is he doesn't want me to fold and he's making sure that these guys do.
Yeah.
The only reason I don't think that clickback is ace, ace is because we're blocking that so strongly. So
We had, we had king, if we had king, king, he would have ace, ace here.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yeah.
And, and should you fold them if you know that?
I'm not.
No, I'm not needed, but i- if, if you're pretty sure, say ninety percent possibility that, that you know we have states.
Dude, if I had like hundreds of hands of stats on somebody and they're playing like four percent VP, one percent PFR, there's a, a world where I could find it. But that's extremely exploitative, would be very, very rare.
Here's actually a specific way to look at it, which is the solver never folds kings. Aces and kings, it always says, I'm fine. Let, let's get all in. And it can be two hundred big blinds deep. It's like, fine. Because its opponents also have ace five suited. Now I'm simplifying what those bluffs are. If you're playing against a guy who's got aces and kings there and a little bit of queens, but he doesn't have any of the bluffs. I guess you could. Does he have the ace, king? If he's got the ace, king, if you've got aces, kings and ace, king, then I think you don't fold. You found king, king, folds with king, king in the solver pre-flop? They're rare, man.
Yeah, yeah, it's, oh, it's rare. Yeah, it's rare, but I, I have found them. And some of them surprised me, but yeah, I found them.
Sure. But it's gonna have to be like glaringly obvious spot with the most ridiculous knit of all time that you would find that in game.
But how, if, if, if it's multi-way, you know, you're not, never fold.
If it, what, sorry?
It's a multi-way pop.
Oh, okay, um. I mean, no, I'm not. I, I'm happy. I, I'm happy with king, king plus to get all the money in pre.
Hmm. In your player pool, do you guys see people five bet kings?
Yes.
Can you feel kings do a five bet?
No.
I'm not.
I don't do it. I've seen people five bet kings.
Just sometimes you're gonna run into aces when you have kings and it sucks, but I mean, the way I look at it, if I start leveling myself into folding top 4% of a range, that's extremely exploitable. I just, I, I can't do that.
So guys, I got a hand which is really comparable to the hand that Mike showed us yesterday. And I made a similar play. Do you guys want to look at that?
Yep.
Sure.
Like, I, I, I don't see people five betting ace five suited in my player pool.
Probably not.
I as well say how realistically, who, who here can see people five bet ace five?
I mean, I'm the guy that will do that, but that might be bad.
But even like I found that even people that say that they would, like they, they don't do it nearly as often as they say they do.
Yeah.
Probably not. Probably not.
All right, so got limper. What do you, and we're playing uh nine-handed on global. Got a limper.
I like.
I chose to limp behind. What are you guys doing?
I like it.
I will raise, I will ISO that.
This early of a position, I don't mind a limp behind.
Yeah, limping is fine. Five, six, I don't.
If we're later, if we're like button versus cutoff LFI?
So.
Then I might ISO.
I, I like your ISO here. I mean, I think the other advantage is that you're gonna take the hand heads up, which is always gonna be good. Ideally, you will. Um. Mike, would you put this into like your, it's just like, this is a, would you argue this is ISO bluff?
Oh, of course. Um, I'm just an ISO bluff here and just to get it heads up hopefully. Uh, and I also wouldn't limp behind in that position. I might call if I was on the button.
Yeah, you got a good point there. This might be a little bit too early for this play.
I think six, five plays well multi-way?
Yeah, it does.
So, so.
Makes me a very good point that you know, well, I think we talked about this yesterday. And this is just like a conversation about. I was thinking of the conversation we had yesterday, Derek, about multi-way with your premiums versus heads up. And I think it just comes down to like your propensity to gamble. I might be a conservative gambler. So I, I'm always trying to increase my equity. But there's a lot of value for taking some hands multi-way. It's just.
I'm kind of in that same boat. I, and I think that argues well for limping behind.
I don't think six, five, six, I doesn't play that well heads up. I think I'd, I'd rather play this multi-way.
I can see your point. So that's what I chose this time. So we invited in this guy. I uh speaking of multi-way, here we go. What do you guys want to do here?
Now that you got multiple players in here and you're closing the action.
I got my wish.
Yeah, you're closing the action. Yeah, you're calling here.
I got my wish, hundred percent.
And look at that. Oh, look at that. We fought the nuts. That's why we, that's why we play these suited connectors, right?
Yep. Yeah.
So check to the, check to the imposition.
I have a, I have a comment.
Yeah, sure.
And because this is multi-way, right? So this would be a great flop if you were out of position versus a three-bet kind of thing, or you know, in the blinds versus a raise. This is a flop that you can lead, right? Uh, heads up, we've seen that many times. This is, I've been wondering, you know, obviously we're in this position here where we're gonna check just, I mean, range, right? But now do we get this flop after playing the way we do here? Do we lead? Because I would expect the button to also check behind a ton.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I have led there in these spots. It's low frequency.
I don't know. I don't, this is like so far out of theory. I don't know. I mean, I mean, in theory, this would come down to who has uh nut advantage. So you got two factors, which leads me to say this is really in the wild. Number one, we've got three ranges in a limp we raised pot. We're multi-way, three ranges. Yeah, I do not know. That's a good question. We might.
I think if it's not rainbow, leading is a lot better. The fact that this is rainbow and effectively rather dry checking is probably better. But if this is monotone or a two-tone, I think uh leading has a lot of merit. If you don't have the same suits.
I think Sutton, I think there, we're gonna be doing, if, if we gets, if it, if player 9952 calls, we're gonna check raise, both of them, if we get, if we're lucky enough to get that. And if player 9952 folds, then maybe we just call and wait for the turn. This is answering his question, how do we get money in this pot?
Yeah.
Check raise. I, I feel like this is a, a very safe, like it's a robust hand. You're not gonna be afraid of anything. So, so if you're gonna find like a balance in your checking range, you need some strong hands to, to check, check raise with. This, this situation is between what a check raise.
Smashes that, absolutely.
Yeah, it's, I'm just saying, what, if, depending on what 99, if 9952 calls, we're absolutely check raising. Because we get to check raise both of them. And also because it means 9285 might not bet again into two players. But now with this, check raise some, check call some.
Yeah, I think check call is fine here. I might in-game lean too much towards a slow play, but I can't imagine a safer. I can't imagine a safer flop for our combo.
This is one where I don't mind a slow play because it is so safe.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got rainbow. And yeah, I mean, so, and he, so what is he composed of? He's composed of his overpair advantage, right? So he's got overpair, but he also has, he's also isoling. So we can assume his isoling range is more than just overpairs, right?
Yeah.
Well, we only have to get two bets in to get all the, yeah, all the money. And so we can get the two bets in one now, one later, or just call now.
Yeah. Behind, so yeah.
Like really, we're playing so shallow that there's only two bets, so.
Yep. Don't, don't mind the, the slow play. This, the shallow stacks are, are okay with slow play.
Okay, so get, we slow play. Uh, get this turn. I assume we're never leading.
Yeah, we'll check, yep.
Don't check behind, don't check behind. Oh, of course he does.
Yeah.
Barry checks behind. What are you guys doing here?
Bet pot.
Yeah, two thirds to a full pot.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I, I get cheeky.
Nice.
I think it gets the call though.
It might get great, maybe he'll go nuts.
We want the raise.
Well, look at that.
We'll take the raise. Yes. Oh, perfect.
Jam.
It's coming all in.
All right, so we, we jam. We don't, we don't jam. What do I do? Yeah, I jam.
Yeah, yeah, we, I would, I would. Ladies and gentlemen, ratio is good for it.
Welcome to the suck out of all suckouts.
That was.
It's gonna happen.
No, I think we did nothing wrong there. I, I can't see anything wrong with that. We got stacked, but so what?
The only question to me is we all agree here, when we, the STI, like I'm channeling my inner Charlie Correll, right? I use the BSI.
That's what, you use the what?
Bet small to induce.
Bet small to induce, right? I'm trying to induce what we get, and we got what we wanted.
That's why I balance my blocker bets with the absolute nuts sometimes, my goofy little 10%.
So yeah, I think we're just always going broke here, right? Is there any, is there any world where we're saying, oh, oh, wait, he could have nine, 10?
No, we played perfect, we lost all the money.
He is so under wrapped for nine, 10.
Is in his range, but you can't, you're not folding.
Oh, yeah, we're just, we're just going broke.
Yeah, he's, he's checking the turn too, right? Like.
Yeah.
And he's trapped on us. We, we got trapped by the trapper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Sutton.
I would say that 10, nine is like very difficult to have in his range at that point with how he played it. Very, very difficult to put him on that combo.
Yeah. And Sutton, you asked, uh, how do we get all the money in the pot? That's how.
But the question is, he could easily have pocket jacks there, right? If he had pocket jacks, he probably would have played similar, like.
Yeah, true, true, actually, for sure.
Sorry, I had a similar. Okay, Scott, sorry.
I was gonna say, if you had pocket jacks there, I actually, I'm, I'm, I'm a little surprised to see the nine, 10, duh. But I'm surprised to see pocket jacks for the same reason as I don't expect them to check the turn. I expect them to bet the turn for value in both cases.
I guess pocket fours would be a little more likely than pocket jacks. That's really the only set he would have from that flop that would go that way.
Yeah, I think we're just always going broke.
Let's let him check back the turn.
Yeah, yeah, true.
It, this is, yeah, this hand is just obviously frustrating. So it's good to get some group think here and say, yeah, well, you're always going broke there. It's just.
Let's, let's go back a step here with this, which is when, so we did the small blocker bet and we got our raise there. And we think that his raise here that we've induced is a lot of bluffs, right? And we go, great, well, we're going all in. Well, he's folding all the.
I like where you're going with this.
Yeah, exactly.
We didn't think this far, which was what? Is he raising that he's calling or jam with? What, what, what's his bluff catch here?
Yeah, that's exactly it. So sets.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, so, so here, so let's, let's take a look at, at, at the sets. The set of twos is the least likely that could do this. And I'm saying because he also raised pre-flop and this, and the deuces don't do a lot of raising pre-flop. Set of jacks works. The jacks would raise pre-flop, they would bet the flop. Do they do a lot of checking the turn? I don't think so. So what sets? Bet the, what, what sets? Bet the flop and check the turn?
Yeah.
A lot. You know, to speak as Joey, some, you know, some jacks do it, some eights do it, some fours do it, some sevens do it, and some deuces do it, but not a lot. So he's weighted towards what he thinks is value and what we, and what is bluff on this, on this raise. So what does he think is value here that makes any sense? That call our.
Yeah, so you're right. I mean, so the argument here essentially that you're making is do we ever check raise here without the stone cold nuts? And, and is there an argument made that without this golden cold nuts, does he not call enough with hands that are worse when we show?
Right.
And I think you have an excellent argument. I mean, maybe the answer here is that we, we just don't get called by enough.
Right, so we just call. We call with the second nut.
Is there some argument for clicking it back then with the intention of maybe he finds the jam with a bluff on the river?
Um, I think that if we click back, we'd become pot committed. I mean, is the question, do we?
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, so I mean, we're never folding. I mean, I don't, I, yeah, I think generally that this is, I mean, if you look at, so what's SPR now? I mean, this comes to, your question comes down to SPR pot odds, right?
So kind of my thinking in that spot would be like, if you are suspecting he has air or he's testing you or, or whatever, or he's just attacking your line.
Then call is better.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, like a min click, like, do you, do you ever envision that?
He's still folding, he, he's still folding the bluffs. If he redoes it over the top there, granted, you're not folding.
I'm just being way too hopeful for him to find that bluff.
So imagine, imagine you're the, imagine you're, you're a maniac.
Yeah.
Lock bets, you raise him with your maniac hand and he min clicks you back. Do you really choose that hand to say?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's just pun city.
You bet, yeah.
No, no, you're right. You're right.
Maniac raise, but did they four bet the river as a bluff a lot? Yeah?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think he just, he just folds that one and goes, okay.
Oh, food for thought.
So the question is, I, I, you know, I think going broke is not a mistake here, but I think Scotty brings up a really good question. And I, I think maybe if I played this back, I think I'm, did not, well, the term that Peter Clark uses a lot, a lot is fortune reversal. And this jack looks so innocuous. But if I had thought more deeply in this hand, I would have seen that there was a bit of fortune reversal here because we went from the absolute nuts to the second nuts.
Yeah.
I didn't even think of that. I was just thinking of Vegas on the Mirage, you know, at that point.
I mean, this is kind of a hand that is a suckout.
Yeah, I mean, I lost all my money on this hand too. I, after the fact reasoned it.
And I mean, you changed that river to the deuce of diamonds, or you changed that four to the four of clubs, and I think that conversation.
Then it's easy.
Lastically, yeah.
Dude, should, like, should, should I be thinking about this kind of shit when, when live, or do I just?
No, no, you, 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 you should because the, because you should think about the following thing, you know, and and I'll include Nick's thing here, which is you bet it to try to induce. If he jams, you call. There's no doubt. Right? But when doesn't jam, when he bets, when he bets this size, before you auto-jam, you say, I have the best hand here all the time. I've got the best hand. But before you bet the best hand, you say give, does, and do, does he have any calls that I beat? And if you don't find them, if you say this guy is going to play jack eight, this is gonna call jack eight off or call ace jack or call his aces, but it's also gotta be, gonna check the turn. Go through the whole line and just say to yourself, can this guy call me? What can he call me with? And if you can't think of a value hand that you beat that he calls you with, don't instantly bet all in. Think about it for another moment. Then ask yourself the question, do I have any bluffs here? And if you do have bluffs, then you want, then you need value to go with it and you have to jam your five, six. But if you are never three-bet bluffing here, ever, then you do not need to balance that bluff. And now you, and now you just default to the, what can he call me with? And if I thought this through, I would have said the only hand that makes sense to me, and I'm wrong about one of these because the nine, 10, he, he did slow play the nine, 10 there. Um, and I don't, you know, so maybe he would have slow played the jack, jack there. I don't think so. Or the seven, seven or the eight, eight. I don't think he would. I think he's betting, especially when the diamond comes in. So yeah, I would have, I would have, if I had thought deeply enough and said, I'm not bluffing here, so I don't have to balance. I can't think of what calls me and he can't have, and then I look and go, what beats me? And go, he can't have what beats me. And then I do the witty thing of call.
And also, yeah, I mean, he has to call your shove when there's two straights available.
Yeah.
Two straights available in a hand where ranges are gonna be all over the place.
Yeah.
And he, I, I have a very ill-defined range. He has a much more defined range than I do. Uh, I have, I have a, a less defined range because of the action pre.
And if you check raised the flop, which was the other way to do it, you just lose your money in different order.
Yeah, 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 you're right. You're right. Um, but I think the lesson to take away from this, which Scotty mentioned before is I probably, I think I made a mistake here of saying of being very attached to this hand. Hard not to fall in love with this hand.
I would.
And not thinking about does he ever have the one hand that beats me? Uh, I think that was, that was probably a multi-tableing mistake.
See, it's just a real sneaky, sneaky setup though. Like it's, I think it's very excusable. Like, I don't think anyone faults you for going broke there.
So Scotty, going back to our conversation at the beginning about downswings, there's, there's been quite a bit of this.
All right, so this one is, this, to back up, we were talking at the beginning, um, before we started recording about being on a downswing and trying to evaluate, is it your play or is it luck? Um, at our skill level, this is bad luck. But a better player, but a better player, I think, might lose fewer chips on this.
I agree. I totally agree.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
Sure.
I think, I think the thought here is, I, I think the thought that, and this is why we come to these groups, right? Let's become better players and, and put some group think to these situations. And we did here, we can, and one modification or adjustment we could make here is are my, what is he calling me with if I check shove here?
Right.
Well, the way that Scotty explained it was very astute and very.
Oh, by the way, if he bets the turn, then we, then we a hundred percent go broke on the hand.
Yeah.
Because.
Maybe the only way we don't go broke is, is this particular line.
Right. No, I, I, I mean it a different way.
Yeah.
Um, if he bets the turn and for some reason, uh, uh, we, we check, let's. Um, if he bets the turn and for some reason, uh, uh, we, we check, let's say he bets a turn, we check raise and he jams our check. Over our check raise, like, we're not going to check because the jacket is there. We're not afraid of the nine, 10 here. That's not why we didn't bet the river, why we didn't, uh, three bet the river. We didn't three bet the river because we said, we have the best hand all the time. But he never calls us with his bluffs. What does he think is value? And then we notice the nine, 10. Because we, because we discount his sets. But if he bets the turn, we don't discount his sets and then we jam.
Yeah.
You know, give us, give us a few more chips. He's betting pocket eights on the river. He's betting pocket, you know, he's doing this with eights. He's doing this with jacks. Cause he doesn't expect us to have a straight.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, okay. What a horrible.
Alright guys, thanks for looking at my hand.
Well, I learned a ton from these sessions.
Yeah, good.
Oh yeah.
It's really valuable for me. I'm, I'm at head explode type.
So it should be.
Derek, I will say one thing to keep consideration is. Sometimes when you're integrating a lot of new information and new learning in poker. Into your game, it can have. A negative effect as well as a positive effect, right? I mean, you, you're kind of learned, you learn to play poker by experience. Is that a fair?
I've read a hundred and thirty books on poker, but they're all before two thousand fifteen. So, so.
Okay.
I have Harrington on Hold'em disease. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to, um, I have probably a terminal case of Harrington on Hold'em disease because I read that book five times.
I loved those books.
So, so here's the way I play. A drunk. Uh, like the, the, this is, this is like, I, I'm sitting at a poker table right beside the roulette and the craps table.
Yep.
A guy who's drunk sits down and puts five, five thousand dollar chips on the table.
Jesus.
What do you do?
Stay.
I'm not walking anywhere.
No, you tip the dealer ten dollars and he doesn't say anything. Because it's bigger than the amount that you can buy in for. That's the play, that's, that's the sort of play that I make. That's the only thing I contribute to this, but.
Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're like talking about a lot of theory and we're talking about, uh, the one thing I was gonna say is. Sometimes there is a negative effect on your play when you're trying to integrate a lot of new concepts and ideas into your. Actual in-game play.
Yep.
And that's just something to be aware. Yep.
Yep, because in, in this last hand, I was just thinking about Vegas and the Mirage.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I'm playing, it's a drunk roulette player, right? You can't even read the board.
Yeah.
Cause that's the kind of situation that I like to play in. Like, I'm not playing Phil Ivey anytime soon.
Yeah.
And you should be playing maximally exploitative. Like, that is, that is a thing. Exploit as much as you can get away with.
So. It's unfortunate we don't have Matthew here. He always brings great hands, but if anybody else has some hands to share, I am, of course.
How do I share hands with the group?
Do you have a, do you have a hand on your, do you have a hand you can see on your computer? Like you have a, an online hand or any hand that you've already recorded?
Um. I used to, uh, mine PokerStars.
Okay, if you.
Like, so I have like, uh, three terabytes of history.
Right, so get.
How old are those, Derek?
Yeah, Derek.
They're from the two thousand, before two thousand, like, like during the poker boom. It's like, like they're really, really, really old. Letting you do that, right?
Database software, poker trucker.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a site that, uh, guys use here. Um, you play a lot of live and what you can do is, you know, obviously you gotta record your hand on paper or. Or remember it or whatever it is you do. And then easy replayer, I think we dropped that link in.
One of your first. Okay, yeah, yeah, I'll look that up.
Yeah, easy replayer, we, we'll put a link in chat here and it's a great tool to just convert your hands to a replayer format. And it's super easy. It's, you know, at, at first it's going to seem, look like a pain in the ass, but it really isn't. You'll be, you'll get very efficient at it. And you can bring hands in, uh, that replayer.
Yeah.
Question for some of you live guys, like, do you actually bring like a pen and paper for?
Yes, yes. A pen and paper are essential tools for live players.
Okay, cool.
Like you can tell a good player because they're writing shit down in, uh, on their phone or in. Um. In a book.
Like, I mean, I would have my phone open and I would take notes on opponents, but I've nev, I've only played a few sessions of live in my life, but I've never actually sat. And recorded hand histories and flops and turns and.
You don't, you don't do all of them. You don't do, you don't write down all the hands. You write down the.
I wouldn't think so. Action, action hands, right?
Write down the interesting hands. So just write down a few interesting hands, yeah.
Okay.
And one of the thing.
I'm gonna start doing that.
Um, if you're a pokercoaching.com member, which I suggest you be because it's great stuff. That's how we're, why, and they're also helping us to be here. Um, if you're a pokercoaching.com member, um, there's a. There's a lesson on actually taking notes on what to write down for the hand, you know, the.
Oh yeah, I saw the, I, I saw the free, what did, how to take notes, um, video on YouTube. That's sort of like led me to here.
Yeah, and Mike does that.
Okay, sweet. Appreciate it.
All right, we got hands.
We do. I got one for you. Um, probably shouldn't take too long, but I, I, I thought this was an interesting kind of thing here because of a. Short stack involved. Um. So I think, you know, everybody's three bet and ace king here. Uh, so we have this, notice this four big, well, three and a half big blind stack. He, he just goes all in here and we get flatted by the original raiser.
And we can't re-raise it. Yep, he didn't get.
Yeah, yeah, we can't re-raise. Yep. So. We get checked too. Any thoughts on what we need to do here?
Or a little bit of a protected pot, right?
It's a lot.
Yes.
Yeah, a bunch of this pot is protected.
A question for the group, does the dry pot theory fall into cash or is that just twenty?
The what?
Makes sense.
The what theory?
It makes sense in cash too.
Okay.
A dry side. Dry side pot means you, you're in a, you're in a hand where somebody has gone all in. So now the way you would play the hand against the other, against the other live opponent. Who's still got chips left is very different because the all-in player cannot fold. So your bluffs lose tremendous amounts of their value. So, let's say.
So it's protected.
Yeah, let's say the one twenty has, um, pocket sixes. We could probably get him off sixes by the river. But we, we're never getting P two off his, you know.
Pocket sixes or whatever.
Pocket six or his four or five, which is never happening. Doesn't matter what.
So the, see, I don't think it's really, I don't think it makes that huge of a diff, or that huge of an impact.
Yeah, it's so small, it doesn't make that much difference.
I think it makes.
I think it makes a fair.
Four big blinds.
You, you.
He owns, he owns twelve of the pot. There's seven, there's seven big blinds in the side pot. That's what you're playing over.
Yep.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm still like really happy with my ace king in that spot.
Right, let's see how he played it out.
Well, what are you guys doing here? I'd like to hear like what your thoughts are. It's on us.
This is a really interesting situation. So you couldn't afford that.
I mean, I'm betting.
So. All you can do.
Here sizing.
Of the rules of ignition, you, you couldn't rewrite it.
Right, then he closed the action. So there was no, there, there was no even option. I couldn't call or anything. It was closed at that point.
I think it's called the partial bet rule, right?
Yeah.
So he raised, we three bet, he goes all, this guy goes all in and he just flat calls. So there's no option for me to do anything, whether I could raise, call or anything that. Goes to the flop at this point.
It's the partial bet roll. Um. So I think also P seven is under the partial bet rule. So he couldn't. He also cannot re-raise.
Yep, that's true.
Right.
So, yeah, this is a weird situation. I have a propensity to check here.
As the hand proceeds, I'm largely ignoring this four and a half big blind stack.
Right.
Yep.
That's fine, but it's, it's really affected ranges, right? Because. P seven couldn't re-raise and our hero Mike could not re-raise.
Like, do we know anything about this player? Did he just lose a major pot? Has he been sitting with twenty big blinds for the last hundred hands? And just been waiting for aces to rip in whatever he has remaining? Like, that would have an impact on it, but. Generally, like, I'm not, I'm really not concerned about it.
Yep.
I'm with you, King. This player here is, makes, really makes no, um, difference pretty much into what like his range might be. Like, I'm not thinking about him in terms of range.
Now, if he sat down ninety minutes ago with twenty bigs and this is the first time he's V-pepped, okay, then I give him credit for something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except that I know that I'm ahead of his range.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I meant earlier where I'm like, I'm even happy with my ace king in that spot, so.
Yep. So, uh, King, you said you were gonna bet here. I, I'd like to know what size.
I mean, I'm going a third. It's a rather uncomfortable bet for me, but I'm largely just thinking like, I'm raising three. Uh, I know I'm not, I know it's not mandatory to bet just because it's a three bet pot. Um. In position, yeah, no, ah. I'm kind of just like uncomfortably throwing out a third just because that's sort of what I'm ingrained to do. I don't know if.
Scotty, you, you're checking here, kind of taking showdown value?
I'm checking here and it's probably a mistake, but I'm checking here, yeah.
I see the validity for the check though, like.
But if I bet, I'm not worried about the dude, I'm not worried about the paired board because he, because I'm going to say that my important opponent doesn't have deuces here.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I don't mean doesn't have deuce, deuce. He, he has, he, he rarely even has ace deuce suited, so.
Yep.
Um. And so it's his pocket.
I'll take.
I, I'm, if I'm betting, if I'm betting here, I'm betting ten. I'm betting half pot if I bet.
Half pot. I took a different approach. I actually took a three-quarter pot bet.
Okay.
And.
He said, let's be done with, I own this and if I don't, I'm gonna find out.
I like that size too, though. More polar.
Exactly, polar and I'm, I'm kind of weighing a lot of like these mid pair, pocket pair type of things here, but Larry brings up a good point that he didn't have the option. If he has aces, if he has kings, if he has queens, if he has jacks, whatever. You know, they're not folding to a three-quarter sized bet. I don't even know if fives through nines are gonna fold to this bet.
I didn't understand Larry's rule. Larry's saying that when that guy can't go all in. When he, when he calls that, but calls for not the full amount, the P seven can't re-raise. I didn't understand that. Is that, that's a.
He's not allowed to. It's because the all-in was smaller than the, uh, like min click size.
Wow, I've never, I've never seen that before.
So this is something you see much more in tournaments, right? So.
Oh, I guess that would be a lot more common.
So in tournaments, the rule is. Uh, I could be off, but the rule is essentially, when it gets to him, he, he cannot make a full bet. He can't meet the size of Mike's bat.
Right.
He can only make a partial bet.
Yes.
So the rule is when he can only make a partial bet. Now. P seven can only call.
I've never heard of that before. Okay.
And I, I, I made a, I made a very dumb error when I was talking about this before, I got excited and talked about. Mike being able to re-raise, but of course he can't because, because this call. But.
Really note, oh, sorry.
So this partial bet rule is obviously, this happens a lot more in tournaments than it does in cash.
Yeah, definitely.
A really noticeable time is when like, if you three bet to say seven and there's a stack behind you with eight. And he's, you know, he's basically just calling. It's one more big blind for him to go all in. You're gonna have to call that one big blind, but you can't do anything more with that. You can't re-raise that one.
Yeah, basically, like, if, if you don't have enough to do the min raise, then it's not reopening the action. Like, you, you, he's not opening it up. That's, that's really the, the gist of it.
That's a good way to think of it, Prime, yes.
Right, but that, that, that's why, that's why Hero can't three bet. But I thought that, I thought that P seven can because P seven has just been raised.
Well, P, P seven now, it does, cannot because.
Yeah.
Of the partial bet rule.
Gotcha. I've just never seen that rule before. All right, moving on in the play.
And I, I think I've got it right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just Googled partial bet rule and didn't, and didn't find it, but I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna look, here's one.
I don't know what they call it. It's just.
Yeah, I don't think it's called partial bet, but it's something, yeah.
I'll, I'll go on.
See it in satellites all the time, all the time in satellites.
I almost think that play P seven does have the option to re-raise.
I think he does.
Could be totally, totally wrong.
Like.
Oh, P seven might, yeah, he had a earlier position than you. He might be able to bump it up and then you would be phased with it, but. I'm actually not sure.
So yeah, that's a, that's a really good, that really does.
Actually, no, I don't think so. I don't think he can do anything there.
I don't, I don't know about that because you think about it, like, like, you, you know, like, it, it, like, let's say that, that the player just calls, right? If, even if, if the, the, the P two player just calls, which is essentially what he's doing, P, the P seven can still raise. Because the, the.
Well, you don't have. Yeah, he could raise to any amount too. Yeah, no, you are right.
So that's why P seven's capped, P seven's capped.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're, so again, we're not sure if P seven can re-raise you for that.
Yeah.
Either way, as played, when it gets back to you here, you can't do anything, so.
Yeah.
Right, correct. I know at the time. At the time.
If I was, if this was my hand, I would assume P seven's capped. And I, and, and, but I don't know that my hand can be anything because I'm not allowed to do anything else.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, and at the time, that's where I was at too. I thought he, if he wanted to re-raise, he could. I didn't know that. If he didn't have the option, I didn't know that. So I assumed he just got flatted and.
I just looked up the partial bet, I just looked up the partial bet rule and found in Hold'em and it says the P seven can re-raise.
Okay, I stand corrected people, sorry.
But that doesn't.
I got too excited by a corner case.
All right, here we go. So let's move on.
Relevant though, so.
Yeah, so I, I wasn't sure about this, the sizing. Um, I chose the sizing to type, kind of target those, those mid pair, pocket pairs. Which again, at the time is kind of where I thought he would line up with ace X or. You know, king X and, and pocket pairs. I'm looking to just. And, and Derek, you brought this up with protected pot thing, right? So he's gonna, he's gonna showdown no matter what. This guy in the big blind is gonna showdown, which I think creates sort of a. Uh, I don't know, like an atmosphere of, well, you've gotta be strong here because, you know, you're gonna have to show your hand. Kind of thing, like it seems like a, a mental. Thing that people have.
Sure.
So it's, so he folded, but so what he folded and he folded pocket sevens. And we, we wind up with king queen over here or something like that. So that's why I was curious about the bet sizing.
Right.
I think that, that, I think you can check. I think you can bet small and bet large. I think there's valid arguments for all, all options. I really do.
Right, I'm actually surprised he folded with the sevens. I, I don't think I'll fold pocket sevens here.
No, that's bad. That's bad.
Yep. Certainly you weren't gonna fold it to a small bet.
No.
Yes, no.
I think it's all, we would fold here. I think it's all, we would fold without a diamond and we would call with the diamond.
So larger just because of the sizing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I think if it was heads up in the solver, solver would be indifferent with these two sevens or seven without a diamond. And it would call a hundred percent if you had a diamond.
Okay.
Yeah.
And with, and although the solver doesn't have the, we don't have a three-way solver with the one guy all in things. Um, I would expect that, that other two cards would also make the sevens want to fold because he's be, because he's also got to. Dodge a ten and a king, a ten and a jack to the river, whatever the other guy's two cards are. Gotta dodge, when, when you're bluffing, he's gotta dodge your two overcards to the seven, which you always have. And he's gotta dodge the other guy's cards. Um, before we do your next, let's do one with the, with, uh. Prime, Prime's got a live hand to share.
And so do you guys, are you guys, do you guys think about that, that, you know, when we're talking about this protected pot thing? You guys think about that in game?
So.
Somebody's all in.
Well, I was actually gonna take it. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I I think it comes down to the size of the pot. I think his portion of the pot's pretty small, right?
Well, on the flop, it's nineteen, right? The the so we're all playing for nineteen.
Yeah, I see. So if I recall Jeremiah Williams getting in the situation a couple of times. And he said, we just. We don't take it into consideration.
Yeah, I just have a very hard time giving any respect to that big blind stack. Like, he's gonna be getting it in with all sorts of king ten nonsense, king nine suited. You know, queen, jack suited, pocket deuces, pocket. It's just, I'm really, really not scared of that. And also, someone mentioned. The idea of uh like the small stack being all in, you're gonna have to show your hand. I actually that. I think that that works in your favor because ideally you're playing kind of balanced. You should be playing a relatively small ball strategy. When you make a simple C bet. He folds and you turn it over. It's like, oh, he didn't have any, he didn't hit this board at all, but ultimately ends up getting you paid in the future because they see you're still making these bets.
I think there used to be like an old. Kind of unwritten rule about not betting into a dry side pot, but I don't know if that really pertains anymore.
Okay. Just when I make a bet into uh with one of those in one of those hands and. Short stack or uh. And I end up flipping over my hand and it seemed that I had nothing. I'm really not concerned about that because I know I'm balanced and I will get paid.
Yeah.
Value in the future.
And none of us were afraid of what of how strong the all in player's hand was. It's just that he has cards. That's all.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Which ace king is gonna be in good shape against.
Yeah.
Generally.
The the rule I think you're thinking of Larry wasn't, don't bet into a dry side pot. I think the rule was bluff into a dry side pot.
Okay.
And now we've seen a good example.
Makes sense.
Bluffing. Into a dry side pot being a good idea. And bluffing big enough to make it work. Prime, you got a hand?
Ye- yes, I do. Uh, I'll just post it in the chat.
Okay.
There's a live game.
Uh, it works.
So, oh, okay, unfortunately, it doesn't have to break the line breaks, but you can probably read that. It shouldn't be too bad.
Yep, we can read it.
Yeah. So I'm just posting the east of the street as it comes. So this is a, yeah, you can see the 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 action here.
Blind post. Right. But you bet four dollars?
Yep. One one.
Good. I just calls. Right, okay.
Like five way.
Yeah, yeah, five way and you're.
Perfect.
Look at that flop. Look at that flop.
And you flop.
What the hell is one one?
Nothing, but perfectly. You you flop everything you possibly could have except for a winning hand. That's great. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so the.
Okay, so there so there you go. So so I'm gonna go east street. I'm gonna tell the action and um just critique like whatever they. You know. So here I lead off a six, hijack folds, cut off, raise twenty. And then small blind call. So this is where I'm listen with a big decision point right there. There's that. I'm fate. I have a. Cut off razor, which is a lag, cut off is it's been lag and he's been tilting because he's been on losing streak. So I he's been doing even more raises than normal.
Right.
And but the small blind is a thinking player on the tight side.
Hmm.
Um, you you know, he he's certainly someone who's studied, like who's definitely not not a a fish uh at the table. So so because of of the rate and the fact that the small blind calls. I was like. Yeah, I contemplated rather just call. Here, but I but the problem I have is that because of small blind calls, the chance of him having an ace of club. Is very high. Like, just the fact that he called this given the action. So I bet, but I then I I kind of like, is this why I'm making like, did I bet too small? And I should I just bet more and try, but then but it's such a monotone board. And I'm like. Ah, you know, that's that's why I'm like.
Okay, but the making sure, I want to make sure this, the queen is not of clubs, right? You don't flop the flush.
No, the queen is club, isn't it?
Club. Queen's club. I flop.
Oh. Oh, I read it. Oh, you have the you have the second nut flush. Okay. I I put you on. I thought you had a, I thought you had a.
No, no, no. Second nut flush. Sorry. No.
Oh, um.
It's queen of club.
Yeah, uh.
The floor manning is a bit funny. It's on a different line.
I know. I don't know why this thing looks so.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we play.
Okay. So with a queen of club, um. Sure. Get more value, get value from an eight, get value from a lower flush, get value from every other hand that he's got. Great.
And I'm on a straight flush draw, right? So so the so so the reality is, I I know I'm betting. I I can't imagine. I like, I don't know if I if it if it justifies me just calling. Because I I I don't think, like, if this was small blind calls, I'm thinking like, if 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 he has two clubs, if he has not flushed, then I then I just get stacked, right?
Yeah.
But 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 the things that I think like he has a very likelihood to have ace of club and non club. The other hand. That's also very, like the fact he called, right?
Is he also four hundred deep?
Yeah, he's pretty deep.
He's four hundred deep, effective.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So there was some factor of protection in the raise as well, protection and value.
A little bit because I I just think that like, like even a cutoff, like he could easily have ace a club there.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
So so I'm just thinking like, he he here's this where I I these sizing, I get really frustrated, like a little frustrated, but like just tough because I go. Like, I don't, I don't think I can slow play this hand. Because there's just too much money left and also there's just too, you know, another club comes, I'm I'm if it's not a nine of club, like, then I'm just gonna be like. You know, oh, right?
Absolutely.
So the the things that did I this fifty five too small, too big, like I don't know. That 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 re raise, that three bet.
I think the fifty five is a little small and here's why. Um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some very huge assumptions about their hands to do this math. Which is one, which is one of your two opponents has the ace of clubs.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna just say that because that's what I, that's what I want to play against.
Hmm.
Has the ace of clubs and you are not yet beat. And if you are beat, you are willing to lose four hundred big blinds. With the second nut flush, which you shouldn't. You should not be losing four hundred big blind. You should not arrange the pot for this, but we're saying that you're willing to lose four hundred big blinds with this. Not, then go back and redo it. You know something they don't know. So they think their ace of clubs has nine outs.
Right.
You know their ace of clubs only has six outs.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to. Make a bet size that nine outs should call and six outs shouldn't.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. It makes sense. Yeah.
Absolutely.
And so that's your exact, so that's your exact bet sizes between that and you can't do it. You can't, you can't beat their implied odds. Because you're one one and four hundred deep and the only way to imply the odds is to go all in kind of thing. We're not doing that.
Right, right.
Um, so just let's make sure we're not giving them the right odds to draw to not to six outs. But we are giving the, you know, but we're giving them the right odds to draw to nine outs. Right odds draw to nine outs is he gets there thirty three percent of the time.
Correct.
So we need to go. Um. We need to make a. That a mistake. And let's see what's, can anybody do that in their head? I have to do it on paper.
I'm so rusty with these calculations a year ago.
Right, so.
Right now. Don't look at me.
Right, so thirty so thirty three percent, he's got a, okay, everybody do, everybody do it yourself. I'm gonna mute myself while I say this out loud.
I I'm probably just using the rule of four to get close enough. Four times six is twenty four, four times nine is. Thirty six, right? So you want to bet like. Is is that close enough?
No, because 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 then you're saying when he only has six outs, I only, I'm only gonna bet twenty four at him. So.
Yeah, no, that's no, that's like, like you can just call call it most twenty four percent, right? That's all I'm saying.
So I'm putting, here's what I'm just, I'm gonna do it as, I'm gonna. Put myself in. In the guy with the ace of clubs shoes and say. What's an amount that the ace of clubs? Is comfortable calling. And he's gonna call a raise to eighty.
But you also have to consider the implied odds, right?
Yeah, but we can't, we 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 can't just the.
Like, are we gonna stack off if the if the uh eight of clubs shows up?
Yeah, we talked about that. We 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 said in our first, in our first analysis, we're gonna say we're willing to lose four hundred big blinds with a second.
Oh, so we can't, so so that we're giving massive implied odds. Is that what you're saying?
Right, and then we and then we may adjust based on that.
But I think we're way too hot, way too deep to give massive implied odds playing four hundred deep.
Right, so. So we want, we need to at least bet big enough that his express odds are wrong.
Yeah, but the if we're if we're giving like three hundred big blinds. Implied odds, then we're just basically fucked.
Yeah, so we go to. I think we need to go, I think we need to go to eighty. Here, because I think the ace of clubs calls eighty.
Ace of clubs might call like two thirty at this point.
Two thirty with only four hundred left?
Yeah. We're basically saying we're playing for all the chips at this point.
Yeah, but my things are like, like, you know, what if they have like queen jack, right?
They're fucked, right?
No, the queen.
But like, if they have, if they have like ace nine of clubs at this point, we're fucked. We're gonna lose all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, so I think the, I think the raise, I think the raise is to is to eighty against against the two players with this hand. Eighty to.
You you don't think, you don't think betting way bigger, like at least one seventy or something like that makes sense?
Nope.
Yeah, but if you bet one seventy, the only people.
They all hold.
It's it's the it's the it's the nuts, like. If I bet that big, the only thing they only call when when I get when I'm already dead.
Yeah, what do you want to call you?
Um, you might get caught, you might get called by an by a worse flush. Certainly somebody else who flops a flush might might do it.
Just so difficult for that to happen mathematically.
Yeah, well, given, I mean, you, I mean, it's gonna be the nine high flush. It's.
I mean, coming from tournaments, I had a bad habit of never being, if there's only three to a suit on board, it's so unlikely that players have suited combos. I know it's much more of a thing in cash games, so that was an adjustment I had to make, but. Like, still.
Hmm. So, okay, so I save that, so we're raised to eighty, okay. Uh, I mean, I I I contemplate that. That's part of the reason I posted it because I did think I was questioning my raise amount. The 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 like, not the initial bet, it's about this, I think, just makes, yes.
How big was the pot when you raised to fifty five?
Well, it's twenty one at the beginning of the flop. So I bet six, so twenty seven. Raises the twenty, so forty seven, and then six sixty seven is at the moment when I, when I, when I raise, right? So that's why I'm like, well, sixty seven is the very moment in the pot when I decided to raise fifty five.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, okay, I I see. I mean, I don't mind going a little bit smaller. I. I kind of think in terms of big blinds and I was just having a hard time imagining the size of the pot there.
That's less than pot size, like.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I'm I'm going pot, roughly pot size in game.
Okay.
I don't mind the concept of a smaller sizing for everything we talked about, though.
Yeah.
I was just trying to imagine how small that actually was.
Yeah, the the reason I was thinking like you were six fifty five, sixty is not that much of a difference. Like, if I if I were over bet, if I go like eighty or or ninety or hundred, is that a better play? Now, and I think I think Scotty, you say yes.
Yeah. Yeah, sweet spot somewhere in the middle there for sure.
Anybody else?
Did you have a hand?
All right.
I think.
Well, I'm gonna continue with the 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 action. So I raised fifty five, cut off folds and small blind calls.
Right.
All right, so additional forty five. So. So here's it, here the turn and river cards are quite interesting, actually. Um, the. The turn, uh, pairs aboard. Six of diamonds.
That's not good.
No, it's not. It's not great. It's not, you know, it's not, I don't think, yes, I really doubt he has a six in that spot.
Yeah.
I'm not that concerned about it, but well, you'll see. So he so small, at this point, small, small. But mine bets one ten. And at that point, I'm already like, okay. Like, I I I honestly didn't think he, you know, I mean, I don't think a six, but like six jacks, six screen, I'm not really. But at the same time, I'm also kind of like, see, this this is interesting because I just called and I'm.
I would have called.
I don't, I think that's the right thing. There's no reason.
For sure.
Yeah, because I I I I guess that I still keep this ace ace of club. And a second non club hand in there, right? But if I raise here, like if I if I raise him, like, what is he gonna call me?
Yeah.
Right?
No, and when the board pairs and when you don't even have the nut at flush, like that very much goes into a pot control type of holding for me.
I like the call.
All right, good. Now, we're for her. Uh, the river is a jack of spades.
Can you get a worse card? Please?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's get a worse card there.
I'm like, I'm like, fuck.
That river sort of makes the perfect argument for why you pot control those sort of drastically texture changing turns.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, okay, I don't understand that. Like, I'm fine with loading the pot up on the flop. Uh, can you explain that?
Oh, good.
Well. Okay, so like. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to play for, I'm happy to play for stacks on the flop here. I mean. When this turn comes in and when all of the uh and when boats are now possible and you don't have. And you don't have the nut at flush anymore. Um, it's, it's. Like when you're, when villain's gonna have boats here, like it's just not really something that you should be looking to play for all of the money. In my opinion, and then when river double pairs. Like your second nut flush is kind of a bluff catcher at that point. So, yeah, I mean, you're looking to. Play for stacks on the flop. But when such a texture change comes on the turn and then yet another one on the river, like it's effectively just a bluff catcher at that point.
Yep, but. Uh. Like you want to shove as much as possible in on the flop, don't you?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I'm thinking about it right.
No, I was looking to get lots of money on the flop. That's. We definitely, wait, yeah, we did raise the flop for sure, for sure, for sure. Um. That turn was just so drastically texture changing, uh, such an equity shifting card, like that changed everything.
Yeah. On the flop, I was arguing for eighty to a hundred. Derek was arguing for a hundred and seventy to two thirty. Um. And now we're here.
Here's my question, we continue. Like, if you imagine you're the villain's position here with ace of club. And some other hand on the flop, if I raise to like one hundred, it's something that I raise a hundred, hundred and twenty, would you call? Or would you, would you jam or call like, like, I want to know.
I was thinking about that with the ace of clubs too, because like if I have a nut flush draw, there's a lot of ways that I'm looking to like bluff all in basically, so. And I mean, those lines. Seem better than calling with the flush draw to me a lot of the time. This deep, that's a different conversation, but.
Right.
So you're saying that the small blind villain here maybe like, like if if small blind instead of calling my thirty five, like, oh, oh, if he he re re raise and I'm I'm jamming at that point, right? If he if he if he go, if he goes up to like, like one, like we raised me to like one twenty, one thirty.
Yeah.
Like then I like, but the things that I think I still can't this 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 miss the fact that he has uh ace of two clubs, like the nut flush already, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
No, absolutely. I mean, I would give him a lot of credit for one club hands with the ace of clubs. I have a lot harder time giving him credit for two club hands on the flop. Either way, I'm still happy to play for it.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay.
That's just me. Take it with a grain of salt.
Yeah, however, will you call, though? Will you call like a big, a really big bet with with a nut flush draw in that?
If it's a really big bet, I'm more inclined to just uh raise.
Okay.
And just kind of like let it run out and maybe, you know, maybe I realize my equity and if not, I fold them out.
Remember the order in which this happened? The small blind had an opportunity to check raise against the hijack. I'm so again, against the cutoff. And he didn't. He waited till we three bet. Then the cutoff folds.
Yeah.
And he still just calls. So I don't betting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Kind of caps himself.
Right, so I I don't mean that he can't have the nut flush here. I think his nut flushes go down in frequency when he doesn't do more on the flop.
Uh, that's a really good point. Yeah, because and I I actually thought of that too because I'm like, like, he he knows cutoff is very loose. Right? Like both was like he said, he's a thinking player. He knows it. So I'm going, if he has not for, will he not raise when a cutoff? Like, like raise there? I I I really doubt it. Like, that's why I I I was pretty comfortable once he calls the cutoff and then. And then call, just calls my my raise, my re, then I'm like, I really doubt he has a a a a not flush right there. Like, he just, I don't make sense.
Calls the twenty, calls the thirty five. What is this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This could easily be an a bald ace of clubs easily. But like, but what I wouldn't expect is this, because you were talking on the flop. If on the flop, after you make your raise to fifty five. If he then jams over that. Or makes a big re raise over that, I don't think that's a, I don't think he's bluffing with just the ace of clubs there. You've strengthened your range so much that that would be a, that would be a suicidal.
He could definitely have ace queen with the ace of clubs with that line.
He he.
Oh.
I would. I wouldn't.
If I if I. That's a lot of strength I'm showing. I I wait like this.
I wouldn't take that line, but I mean, I I would give him credit for possibly having that combo.
But you wouldn't think that if he has that com- so you think when he has that combo, he chooses not to check raise the cutoff. But after you three bet and the cutoff folds, then he decides to check raise, he decides.
That's, uh, yeah, that kind of. It's a goofy line, right? So like.
So when he check, the fact that he didn't do that. Gives him, you know, which I say he wouldn't do with it, with a bald ace of clubs or with the ace of clubs queen very often. That pushes down his frequency of having, that pushes up his frequency of having the ace of clubs in this configuration. So he has just the clubs sometimes in this configuration. And when he bets. On that six. Big, that seems like not a lot of ace of clubs.
True, true, I mean.
Yeah.
I see, I do see some of those bets, like, people getting scared basically and trying to like, oh, I was ahead on the flop. And this is a very scary card, so I want to kind of close it out now. They were kind of.
Yep.
Trying to milk you along the whole way, but then they kind of want to just shut it down on the turn. I see that line sometimes.
Yeah, and then he bet the turn. That's the thing, like, he, he did a pretty healthy bet on the turn.
So I'm not folding to that turn bet.
It's a weird one.
Bet, if he, if he jams the river, I'm going to cry. And.
Well, well, thankfully, I'm gonna ta-talk about river, and thankfully, he checked, he checked the river. And at that point, I didn't think too long, but I checked behind because I was afraid that if I bet there and any kind of bet, he, he is, he gives him an avenue to, 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 to. To basically push me off the, the pot.
Yeah, clear check behind, in my opinion, clear checks.
Good, oh. But I was like, but I was like, I'm like, I can't, it's double pair board, I'm like, eh, I, I, I don't think I get any more value. I just, what is he gonna call with, right?
He's got jack X, and you have effectively a bluff catcher, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Any jack, any, any jack, any six, all his queens are there, but do they call you? And his, and does he fold the ace I flush when he has it there?
Probably more weighted towards six X, actually, like, with the line that he took.
Yeah, he's got a six, and he's got a full house, and he's not folding it.
Yeah.
When they has that.
So, so thank God, so I checked, I was pretty relieved, actually, but, eh, 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 at the time. And thankfully, he, he did have a ace of club, ace of club and a, and a seven of, of spade was his hand.
Oh, perfect. That's the dream scenario.
Oh, but, but, but like, was that river just killed me, man? That, I'm like, come on, man.
Ace club, seven spade?
Ace of club, yeah.
Okay, okay, alright, fair enough.
But that river, right, that jack, that jack, it's like, I mean, they really don't think worse than that is a queen, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So your read in game was more or less spot on, though.
Yeah.
Had him on exactly what he had, and you pot controlled, and.
And my read.
Well, that's the thing, like, like, that's why I was, I was thinking, like, like, that's why, probably reason I didn't, I, I probably thought. The, the flop re-raise was really where I was really questioned, because I, I was pretty confident he probably has some sort of draw. Like, given he's a type, type player, that's not like maniac, he doesn't like, 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 he doesn't do a lot of bluffing. I haven't seen him do a lot of bluffs. So he, I'm pretty sure he has some, some fundamental draws. The, the question is, what am I gonna get him to bet with, that he'll call with, or possibly get the cutoff to come along?
It's one of those annoying, annoying runouts. You're doing backflips when you see the flop, and then the turn comes and the river comes, and you're sitting there like, can, do I fold? It's just annoying, but.
And so with this, with this hand, um, and his exact, and his exact holding, which is one of the ones that we really put him on a lot. I was surprised that he bet the turn.
Yeah.
But that's there.
Silly.
On the flop now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue even more for, I think, I think, put more money in, and here's why. If he turned over his cards and showed you he had the ace of clubs and the seven of diamonds. You wouldn't hate getting a fold there, and you certainly wouldn't want to make it, you, you certainly wouldn't want to give him a, a thirty, you know, only pay thirty five dollars more. He's already called twenty.
Yeah, that's right. I, I forget, you know, the bet is like sizable, but yeah, that's why he only has to put in twenty. He's not putting in the full amount, yeah.
He's not making any mistake there, uh, uh, for twenty. He's, it, it's perfect. For twenty, you've allowed him to play perfectly. That's why I want to bet bigger. And if he folds, if we don't get him along, you know something? How much do I hate somebody folding six outs? On an already inflated pot? And this is a big pot for one one already.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, by, by the time I raised, that's already seventy dollar, like, hard, right?
Now, I, I don't need to bet two hundred into it or three hundred and say, you, you, you need to bet all, fold all your draws. I want to get some value from them. But I want that value to be a mistake. And I think, and I think at, at twenty five, at thirty five dollars more, it's not enough of a mistake.
No, that, no, that did it. Like, now, now that you, you put it all, like, the, the fact that you only had a call twenty, yeah, that's it, that's right. Then, that makes a fifty five actually a pretty big mistake in sizing, because that needs to be at least eighty, ninety. Yeah, you have to make him put like, like, six, seventy, eighty bucks there.
Right.
All of that being said, I think, I think the logic and reasoning behind all of this was very sound, and your read was, uh, very logical and astute.
Okay.
Yeah, the turn bet really, it kind of threw me in a bit of a loop.
Yeah, yeah, but you're, but you're not folding it to it.
It would have, with me as well.
And then the, the jack, I was, I, I was actually like, please don't bet. I was like, river, I was like, please don't bet, please don't bet. Because if he bets, I'm sort of, I'm like, I'm, I'm gonna be like, in my head, on the table, right? Like.
Yeah.
Scotty, do we have time for a couple more?
Yeah, Mike. Thanks, Brian. Mike, you had two more in, uh.
Uh, I did. Is, is there anybody else that wants to get theirs in?
King, did you have one?
I don't have any told this week. I mean, I have my poker tracker. I don't have any specific ones that I've set aside. I was sick for the better part of this past week, so I didn't really do a lot of grinding, just.
I've got one, but Mike's got one. Uh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, two more there.
Uh, right, should see queens. Whoops, that's, uh.
Yep, we see queens. We see queens on the river.
Yeah, so spoilers, spoiler alert. So I took an, an unusual line here, and the reason is because of this guy right here, he has been three betting, uh, a ton, and not a huge sample, but really kind of getting out of line.
That's, that's alarming, yeah.
It's been shown downs, so it's not like we haven't been seeing it either, so.
Thirty-three percent and twenty-three hands is not insignificant.
Yay, yay. I li, I like your exploit.
So I did flat here, um, which actually, solver actually doesn't mind flattening queens at some frequency. It's a small frequency. And even ace king offsuit, it doesn't mind flattening on the button to, um, to these early position raises.
Yeah.
Nope.
And I think there's even a, there's even a pro that Larry, uh, has brought to mind. Might be Jeremiah Williams or somebody. Larry, you've mentioned this before, that they always take about ten percent of their queens and ace king and flat on the button.
Yeah, CG though.
Yeah, that frequency is about right. Like, it's, it's low, it's like eight, ten percent. Maybe even like five to eight percent for me in reality, but.
I would say it's like almost never for me. If I have queens on the button here, I'm never flattening, except for these unusual situations where.
Yeah.
I'm exploiting some other player.
For sure.
But he did not oblige, unfortunately. It's when you go, damn.
Oh, well.
Uh, so we get to the flop here with, you know, a king high flop, of course.
Then you were wishing you were three bet pre.
It's easy to play now.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I call.
Yeah.
Easy call, right? We've, we've really underrept our hand, and he's, this is a board that he should be c-betting a lot.
Yep.
So it seems easy so far, uh.
Basically a blank.
That should slow him down, but it doesn't, which is interesting, right?
And that's a sizing tell for me in game. When I see this, when we're a hundred deep in my games, they bet a hundred percent pot with value, and the smaller. Almost, they want to be pot-sized bets, but they're not quite. That's when they are scared to commit to the bluff sizing. I, I'd be all over this. This has my alarm bells going off.
So let's talk about a siding tell, which is interesting. So the siding tells. Sorry.
Is this a side tell seventy-five percent pot? I would think this would be kind of.
Yeah, it is for me, and especially, especially the fact that it's seventy-five on the nose.
So you think a more, uh, you know, in theory, a more polarized sizing, a bigger sizing should have more bluffs in the range?
Yeah. Yep, I do.
So then there's no, you raise it.
Nope.
No, yeah, definitely not raising, right?
No, definitely not raising.
But is it an easy call?
It is for me.
So I, I think what's interesting to me, this range versus range, and I'm curious what the group thinks, but.
Like, he's got a ton of king X, but, oh, sorry.
I think this, uh, I think this seven is better for our range. Because.
Yeah.
It falls more into, uh, that call range.
That seven was more or less a blank in my mind.
Okay.
Not for him, not for him.
He's got some, but I'm not really scared of it.
No, no, that's.
I mean, he's, he's essentially saying, I, he's saying I've got kings or I've got a seven, is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Because he's not slowing down with a seven.
Very well may have.
Saying, I just, I just voted up, or I've got trips.
Yeah. King, what I meant was.
Or ace king, or aces.
I didn't mean for him. I meant, in his point of view, looking at our hand, that seven is not a blank.
Oh, okay, my mistake, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that seven is good for our range, not good for. Right, okay, good.
I'm with you.
Alright, great. That's ten, we call.
Okay, so pretty, uh, uh, that was the only real, real question, because he, he checks. And are you ever betting?
I don't think you can with the king on the board. I think it's.
Totally fine calling here. I mean, just. Checking here behind, yeah.
Yeah, that seems like the clear, clear play, so, but he, you know, he, he's bluffing the whole way. So, yeah, taking, taking an unusual line like this, and then facing, you know, pretty good aggression. I was just, I was a little worried that maybe I was being a little too call-y, too stationary, but.
So the only question I have is like, looking at this line. And this line, wha, I had questions about his line, right? I questioned his turn value bet, because in my head, this card should slow him down. Right?
Yeah, especially the sizing that he chose. It was extremely suspicious.
What is your, what is your check calling range? Your check dog range has got a significant amount of seven X.
You mean out of position here?
Yet he polarizes on turn. Despite this card in mind, I totally could be off base. He polarizes on turn, despite this card being really good for you.
I don't think he really polarized on turn. I think he wanted to make a bluff, and he chose a very bad sizing and wasn't fully committed to following through with his line.
Okay.
And just made it very easy to look him up.
Uh, I was, I, 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 I think that seventy-five percent is, is pretty good. I thought that was, I was just expecting.
Why would he not size for, uh, why would he not size to get more money on the pot with a value combo?
Well, that is, that's, it's a large bet. It's considered a large bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a large bet out of position.
Are you not supposed to go like over bet more in line with, what, would that be two?
I think the paired board, I mean, we can run this, but I think the paired board is going to drive down your sizing, especially this.
Okay, that makes sense. That does make sense.
This card, which is really good for the check calling range of button.
Okay. Just, I know in my games, on that turn, when they fire a hundred percent pot, I give him credit for a king. When he fires that ten into thirteen, I give him credit for something that's trying to get there, or just nonsense.
Yeah, I can see that. I mean, I, 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 and it's interesting to hear other people's takes on sizing tells.
It's not, not black and white, but it is an undeniable pattern that I have seen in my games.
So what about on the river? Is this, is this a second pair of thin value situation?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. Not versus that aggression, not versus, not versus those sizes.
It's way too easy for him to show up with a king, any marginal king, king nine, king ten.
That he's just not, that, that he doesn't want to bet three times.
Yep.
Now, if he goes, if this is a three of diamonds on the river, and he goes seventy-five percent. We gotta fold, right?
You gotta think very.
I would.
You, you, you don't have an insta-fold, but you've got it, but you've got to think very seriously about it, yeah.
It's too easy for him to have a king?
Easy for him, king, and he can have a flush draw there, and if.
And, yeah, we're blocking.
Right, at that point, you want, you want to have the queen of, you want to fold the queen of spades and call, and, and consider calling with a queen of clubs, and that's how you get your frequencies right.
Sure, that makes sense.
Larry, do you have wizard available? I'll have it set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can run this. You want to run this? You guys want to see this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a really good, like, uh, bread and butter poker sort of a hand.
So that, there's going to be a call with queens, that's good. So we're going to be able to, everything in this is going to work while you set this up. And I'm gonna make, this is my hypothesis. The river, queen, queen, without a spade, calls with a spade, folds.
Yeah, I could see that.
That's what I'm gonna say.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say.
Pretty GTO.
Yeah, what about sizing, though? Let's say, so assuming, assuming like a sixty percent, seventy percent sizing?
Yeah, common sizing.
Assuming a pot, oh, well, wait a minute, we don't have pot sizes, and so it's going to be the seventy, we, we don't have pot-sized rivers in, um, G, in GTO Wizard. It only has.
Yeah, Wizard usually has like a sixty percent, he's out of position, so there could be a block bet, their size, there could be a sixty percent, seventy-five.
Twenty-five.
One twenty-five, yeah.
I'm ready when you are, sir.
Okay.
Alright, so, so we get queens, let's just look at ranges real quick. So he does, he said, we've seen this a lot, and also in our reports we looked at today. He's betting him a lot, um, it's ar- arguably betting range. Uh, uh. Yeah, he's got, he has, um, a range advantage in this upper tier.
Yeah.
And I, it makes sense when you look at the ranges, right? Look how many more queens, kings he has against the GTO range.
Oh, yeah, I range bet that board out of position.
So top pair, he's got twice as many top pairs, which is driving. Uh, so. Sorry?
He has nine, ten, he's got his hand, so that's.
Yeah, and we have a sliver of queens.
Right? Uh, what's, ten of spades, he bets it.
And he bet small, right?
Yeah, he went, uh, almost half, but not quite half.
Do we give him half, just to make it more interesting?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, he bet.
It's closer, I think, anyway.
So you're never folding queens to this sizing?
Or he bet three, and then seven fifty, so yeah, fifty percent should be good.
Yeah.
You're never calling, this easy call. I mean, everything down here begins to get a little shook. But your queens are very top of your calling range, I guess. So you're calling.
And we're never raising queens, we're actually doing almost no raising.
Yeah, and I think that is a factor.
Makes sense.
I think that's a factor of this.
Yeah.
That's a factor of this equity that she has.
It's just the most textbook, like, marginal holding.
But even our, we don't, we don't raise our, our sets very often.
Yeah, yeah.
Slow play, we, everything, we slow play even our good hands here.
Yeah, in position, yeah, we almost always have a low frequency raise.
So we do a little bit with a little bit more sevens, but yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially, I guess, is there an argument to be made, why do we want to fold out his buffs when he's got a super wide range?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and we could, and because we can get the, you know, we're in position, so we can make bets when he checks. No street's gonna go check, check unless we want it to.
Yeah. Seven of clubs, right?
Seven of clubs? Now, let's see what is.
So he does polarize, yeah. So I was wrong. I thought that this was, I, I thought this was a hand, well, he does. He polarizes, but he checks a lot too. Um, but his combo is supposed to check, I try to realize that, but.
But he's got, he's got bets there. He does have bets. And this twenty-five is in there? Yes, yes, it is.
And solver is, I will note, when solver's betting here, they are sizing for that two E, it looks like. Betting a hundred seventy-five, that's the most, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, it, yeah, it's most popular sizing is a hundred seventy-five.
It's a heavy polarized board, heavy, heavy.
So, uh, real quick, just like, I'm curious who has more houses and trips. So, yeah, he's got more full houses, we got more trips. So it's this very interesting, uh, flip we see right here, right? Where he all of a sudden has all these nutted combos. He's really ahead, he's, so I think what, when I look at this graph, I think UTG is really ahead or really behind, right?
Yep.
So he's polarized range advantage and nut advantage.
So he gets to use the ten-nine at some frequency. What are our queens? And you're not going anywhere. Well played.
You have a tiny folding, tiny, tiny bit of folding, and it's with, with, what's the suit that folds a tiny bit? And then, we're not, we're not folding here at all. I just want to see what you need. You, it's.
The spade club and spade diamond.
And diamond club. Okay, I'm not.
Kind of weird.
Let's move on.
Yeah, that's weird.
Yeah, we're indifferent.
I'm shooting how to learn that.
Um.
I wonder how it chooses those suits sometimes when it's indifferent.
Sometimes we know.
Uh, so you call, then here, here's the real question. The real question is, do we have thin value when the nine of hearts comes?
And do we, and what do we call when?
When he bet. Okay, he checked, right?
Yeah.
There's no way it bets.
Well played, sir.
No turn value.
So should we look at what our threshold is? I think this is always interesting.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, you know, we're not, of course, we have buffs, but where's our value threshold? Top pair.
Top pair.
Top pair on a paired board, right?
Top pair, good kicker.
Yeah, and it's king, jack is not even that.
So this is our very best king, right? So we're going to three bet his king.
Oh, no.
And then we get into, and then we're, we're just shoving it with the ace king.
Can we look at the chart? I just want to see how low those king bets go. Little sliver with king, jack, little sliver. Oh, wait, let's throw one.
No, you need king, you need king queen. King jack is, is, is a call.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Now, when we get bet into with our queens.
Okay, so we get bet into, so his most common sizing here on this line. He's slowing down. Look at this.
Yeah.
Melking you for value.
Yeah.
Um, so what size do you want to give him? Do you want to give him the blocker or you want to give him a B sixty?
Uh, well, the blocker we always call, right? Blocker, we call a hundred percent.
Okay, so let's look at the B sixty.
I mean, I want to confirm that we call the blocker a hundred percent.
I'm gonna fold to B sixty.
Wow.
That, that doesn't so much look like a blocker bet to me. That looks like a, he's milking me for value.
And we are now indifferent. We want to block his front door.
But I'm wrong.
Sorry, that's, we want to block.
No, we need the spades. This is terrible. This makes no sense to me.
It doesn't. So this is, I think, a situation what we've seen before where he's not supposed to bluff in this line, his busted front door FTS.
Yeah, I would think it would be the opposite with these suits.
Yeah, so if he's not supposed to bust bluff his busted FTS, we call with it. Yeah, the FD blocker. But I would argue this is probably against population, maybe not the best.
Yeah, because population is not. Especially a pair of board, would, would, is as likely to bluff with, with a flush draw, is that?
Yeah.
Like, like, who really, like, you know, a thinking player, we see a pair of board, would you, like, you'd be less inclined to bluff with a, 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 a flush, like, like a flush draw, right?
Mm-hmm.
You just more likely just give up.
Yeah, because these are, don't need to be on a flush draw.
So these are his spades, right? And he's supposed to give up. Which means because he's supposed to give up here with his ace high, queen highs mostly. Um, he is, he's not supposed to bluff with them. If he's not supposed to bluff with them, then we don't want to block him.
Right. When you say give up, he's giving up because he has showdown, right?
Um.
No, queen ten doesn't have.
No, if he, if he give, if he check, he's checking his, his, um, ace X suiteds, right? His busted flush draws. Yeah, because, um, because he had showdown with those.
He's a symbol, yeah, but then.
But he doesn't have showdown with queen ten.
Maybe the queen X or check folds on the ace, the ace X or the, uh, check calls.
Going to check call them, but.
I don't think so either, but.
Let's clear this. And then we could see now when we look at ace high. And upside filters. He's high. Yeah, he's, you've got a good point. He's not really bluffing it that much. He's, well, this is interesting. He is never bluffing with the jack, ace jack here. And he is queen, but he is at some frequency bluffing.
Without the, without the spades.
Without the spades, yeah.
That makes more sense than, uh.
Right. If he bluffs without the spades, then when we have a spade, we, we, that's why we don't call.
So I, yeah, so I think for me, the most interesting takeaway from this one is check here. And where is our value threshold to bet? And our value threshold is really top pair, our best kicker.
Queens don't even have a sliver, right? We can't look at a check raise.
Go back for a second.
Uh, to what, to this line?
I said we were going to call without a spade. And he's calling us, let me make sure that I did, that I did do that backwards. What, what are we doing here?
Well, this is the check line. Do I direct the bet line?
Yeah, when he bets, um.
B sixty?
B sixty, we fold everything, which is, right? But let's, he goes, he goes for a blocker. And I'm just looking at our queens again. Right, we need a spade to call. That's crazy. Okay, I'm done.
We were looking before what we, yeah. We were looking for what we bet with, and this is what we call with. Um, but guys, you want to look at a hand? Uh, or is there anything else you guys want to see here?
No, thanks for running it.
Yeah, no worries, man. Um, can I show you a hand where I was putting hell with aces?
Yes, yes.
And so this goes, so I think this hand goes to our previous conversation about blockers, right? So, so we open shocker four ways. And then this is where it gets interesting. We get a dunk.
Is two and a half the right bet size?
It's a fine bet size. You can do two and a half, you can do three. There's even a GTO thing where you bet smaller in the low jack, like two point three and two.
Okay.
For that, but, oh, the only important thing is that if you want to play unexploitably, you don't vary your bet size based on your hand. You can only vary it based on your position. Um, and if you don't care about being played exploitably because you believe that your changing of your bet size is exploiting the rest of the table more than their read is exploiting you, then you can change your bet size. None of us change our bet sizes. We've all made the decision. And the reason we've made that decision is because the people who teach us, who are better than us, have all made that decision. And we don't want to be criticized by that, on that very basic thing when we show our hand.
Okay, fair enough.
I used three point one for what it's worth for my open sizing.
So this guy, this, uh, I mean, Dylan here is Bud and, uh, he's been pretty quiet. He's got, yeah, obviously he's had a very good night. He's been pretty quiet. Um.
Okay, but what about, um, this guy, this doctor? What, what's, what do you know about this guy?
I, I don't remember any particular reason in this doctor.
Nothing?
Yeah.
Cause I would consider raising now.
Okay, yeah, so.
Even though it's probably not supposed to.
This is a really weird one, right? Because we're four ways with aces on what looks like a pretty innocuous board, but we've got two players still to act. Yeah, I don't know.
The, this board, by the way, by definition, this is a wet rainbow board. This is not a dry rainbow board.
Okay, yeah, good point. Yeah. There's two straights. They're two straight.
Five six, five, six, eight, nine, and six, eight are all.
In the game, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't mind the raise to get it to a heads up pot, so we're not giving three other players a chance to realize that straight.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'd go with it, but.
What size would you?
I'd just go fifteen.
And fif, yeah, yeah, fifteen.
Just to get them to fold.
So I like that, I like that idea because it's a little bit of where you're at too.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you raise here, everybody kind of aligns where you're at, but when you look at it, it happens a lot sometimes in solver.
Is it okay to bet twenty here or twenty-five?
It's okay. Um, but you're, but you're now going to get him to fold a lot of his tens that you have that, that you are so far ahead of, but he never folds the hands that have you beat.
Yeah, that's fine tuned in that sweet spot.
Does he have a lot of four sevens and ten sevens?
Nope.
We don't think so.
But he's got some, he's got some fours, he's got some sevens. He doesn't have many tens. I'm thinking tens raised, but fours and sevens are easy calls. And he might have some ten, he might have ten, seven suited in his, in his last position. I don't, wouldn't expect to see him with seven fours.
Yeah, so, uh, I like your raises, guys, and I think it makes sense. Um. I decided to call here because there's two people to act in a forward pot, which is freaking me out with aces.
I know I'll end up doing that in reality a lot.
And we get this from our, I mean, Dylan, so this is a four X raise, right?
Yep, okay.
So this guy's, what's this guy? Let's, let's arrange this guy. He's saying essentially has.
Two pair better. That's what he's.
Two pair better, right? We could discount two pair heavily because I think he's probably a pretty good player and he's been.
He's not had a high V PIP, so.
You know, he's saying, I gotta set. Welcome to my world.
Sevens probably.
Okay, now this is where it gets interesting. He folds. What are we doing here?
Oh, nah, huh. Yeah, it's either call or fold, right?
Yeah, we're never raising, right?
Nope.
I call. Interesting card, right? Now.
Money saving card.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it isn't my saving card.
For me.
But.
Check fold.
Yeah, maybe, I think, I think you got a good point. Um, but he's saying essentially he had a set before, because he, and now he only has one combo set of tens, right? He doesn't have, he has, there's one combo of tens that he has.
I don't know, king ten suited, queen ten suited, jack ten suited.
He's thinking that those hands don't, don't raise, uh, don't raise two players in a multi-way pot.
Shouldn't, but I wouldn't remove it entirely.
That's what Larry's, that's what Larry's, that's what Larry's put him on. And so.
Okay, okay.
My presumption is that he does not, he does not play, uh, well, ace ten, we're blocking, right? So ace ten, we're heavily blocking. King ten suited is possible. Uh, but he also has eight, nine, and five, six at some frequency, maybe?
Yeah, for sure.
You think he raised him into two players?
Yeah, not much. That's a very good point. I mean, you'd have to really be a very aggressive player.
Cause he, cause he might've had to throw away his equity against one of you two.
I mean, I would find that raised myself, but.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't either, multi-way. Uh, it's very hard to find that kind of bluff multi-way for me.
I would take the, I would take the, uh, odds that they were giving me. Give yourself five. We, we've got six, seven, we've got, uh, eight, nine of club, eight, nine of clubs right here.
I used to do that a lot more often and I tried to start taking the more aggressive lines with my draws and my semi bluffs.
So in theory, he really shouldn't.
Players when you're not, against two players where you're reopening the action against both of them, giving both of them a chance to knock you off your equity.
And I'm sure I'm torching money to some degree in those spots.
I think. Against one player, it's different.
Point taken, point taken.
I think.
So I, I got really, um, focused on the fact that this just reduced his combos of tens and it also, you know, frankly, it reduces his combo of ten X.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, and he put in a half pot bet. What are you guys doing here?
Certainly not raising.
Such, I'm such a station, uh, but I've been learning to try to, what's the term we've been using? Exit early?
Yeah, exit early multi-way. Yeah, so against this sizing, it's a tough one. Anybody here have, have a better player than me able to fold?
Joey folds here.
Joey would definitely.
I'm not saying Joey's a better player than you. I'm saying Joey folds here.
I'm not saying I'm a better player than you. I have nitty tendencies, so I can, I can.
Yeah, Joey would be on a soapbox right now, uh, admonishing you for even calling the flop.
Uh, yes, yes. Contested pot multi-way.
Flop mandatory call.
This guy bets into two players. He's not doing it with just a ten. That's, that's the Joey speech. But when he's with just a ten, now he has you beat.
Yeah, which is, which is totally valid. And I'm just like focused on the fact that, and this might be an error, this might be a uh, thought fallacy on my part, in that this ten reduces his, 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 uh,
His value.
Equivalency of ten X and he has only one combo of tens, which really should be the only tens and sevens and fours, which should be the only ones that are raising this aggressively.
I am still giving him credit for more ten X combos myself.
Which I think is fine, yeah. So.
I have a hard time totally removing those.
We stationed this maybe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we check and he shoves. So we're, and so the seven is interesting, right? It's now where, you know, he only has one combo of sevens.
Right. The seven, the seven didn't, the, the, the seven was kind of a blank to you because we don't think he's doing this with a seven.
But we do think he would be doing it with, uh, a set of sevens.
Right, which now he has fewer of, yes.
Which he only has one combo.
Right. And now he doesn't do this with pocket fours. With his pocket fours, he should check behind.
Yeah. And, and you know, you have to, you'd have to give him a healthy combo of five, six, and eight, nine places where.
I don't see how this can be a call. Mandatory fold, in my opinion. Mandatory fold.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
So this was so hope, I was so focused on the reduction in sets here, which I think are the most hands that are most likely to play this way. That I had to timeout. I couldn't hit the fold button.
You like, you can't blame yourself. You can't blame yourself. You can blame the timer.
No, that makes, that makes sense. I mean, that this is a really hard, that, that on reduction of sets, this is a really good. Then it also reduces, by the way, two pairs. It's a huge.
That's a very good point.
They're suited. Um, what two pairs suit, what, what, which one does he have left?
In theory, he shouldn't have any two pairs here.
Yeah, he had to have ten, two, he had to have ten, seven suited. That was the only one we gave him.
And now, I know.
I wouldn't take four, four out of his lot, out of his range either. He absolutely could take this line with fours.
Right, but I don't discount all of the, I don't discount all of the tens on the flop. All of his single tens.
Yeah, especially with your flat call, uh, on the flop, because, I mean, if you think about all of his value, right? He's down to one combo of sevens, one combo of tens, and three combos of fours. That's five combos of value. If you start adding ping ten, ace ten, which you block ace ten, um, you start adding. So if you start adding the tens, you're up to what? Maybe eight or nine value combos? And now you got to start looking at your bluff combos. So that's the eight, nine suited, which you'd have all four combos of eight and nine, all four combos of five, six, you're up to like thirteen about, or, or eight, eight bluff combos of the natural bluff combos, if you don't give them any weird shit.
Oh, you can give him, but, well, the question is, if he plays six, eight pre-flop, he can, he can make that also the same bluff. Six, eight is, is the equivalent of, of eight, nine.
Yeah, yeah, some good shots.
But I don't think he has six, but he, but, but you, you made him a thinking, you made him a player who doesn't have six, eight suited here.
Right, yeah.
That was in your initial plan.
Yeah, I don't think he's going to cross six, eight suited.
Right.
Even if he is capable of bluffs, it's just, I don't see any compelling argument to be a hero on this river. I really don't.
And also, by the way, very nice on the fly combination of Torex from, from Mike here. Um.
Always appreciated.
Uh, yeah, so I, yeah, I think it's a follow-up, but I was so tempted because
It's hard.
Of the, of the, um, reduction in his sets. I mean, now he's down to two sets.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I think that theory, or I think your reasoning is sound. I do.
Um, yeah, I didn't even roll on this, so I just, I just, I was, I was so much anguish, I just let it go down.
Yeah.
So back to the flop, when you, when you just flat called the dunk, does that give, um, a little bit more license to the button to be able to bluff those hands that we're talking about that we typically might just call behind, right?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I would think so.
I think not.
Okay.
Uh, so just, let's give ourselves the, the very, let's give ourselves eight, nine of hearts here, bet and a call. My bluff's got to work against two players and I bluff to what size?
Four X this.
All. I go to twenty and I'm, and I need that bluff to get through two players. And I have the alternative of putting in five in position to try to make the nuts with a heart coming or my straight coming. Now compare that to, so compare the, the, the number of times you think he plays the eight, nine of hearts this way to when he plays his two combos of ace ten. He's got ace, ace ten of clubs and ace ten of spades that he does this with. Does he do this with eight? Which, which of those does he do it more with?
Yeah, I'm with you. Uh, you're right. I think, uh, the open enders are better played call and your bluffs would come from, say, like ace four of hearts or four, five of hearts. As better, as better raise bluffs because you're okay to just fold when you get repopped, right?
Right.
Um, what, so can we?
I mean, I don't know what he plays. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just stating out the, what we really thought he did. We thought that he raised in this situation with the eight, nine of hearts.
Yeah, we're giving him those.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, yeah, I think, I think the fold is fine, but I would, yeah. Uh, this was a lot, this is one of the most, more close.
This is hard.
Heroes to me because of the run out.
Yep.
And just, and you know, the question I guess for the group is, am I overvaluing black value here on this one?
I think a little bit, but I might be way undervaluing it, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Ah, here's the other thing about this. When he does this.
Raise the flop and you avoid this situation.
Yeah.
So if we raise the flop, so we raise the flop.
I, I gotta drop it, Scotty, sorry.
No, no, I, that's fine.
If we raise the flop here to this. Uh, sorry.
Effectively plays out the same, I think.
How is he gonna play his ten, his sevens and his tens? He's gonna call. Right?
Yeah, and when he calls, when he flat calls the dunk, you raise and he flat calls, your aces are just basically kind of trash at this point.
Yeah.
So what size would you use here? I'm sorry, not, sorry.
Oh, fifteen.
Like, I would probably go to fifteen. Or like, uh, Derek, or was it Derek or Prime who said they might go to twenty and.
Yeah, I, I said twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah.
That discussion of getting called by better and having them fold out their worst hands.
Yeah, I like, I like the flop here. And if he, if he flies behind, you understand that your, your aces are now reds.
Yeah.
To outdraw.
Yeah, if, if, like, calling a big bet is very differently than calling a small bet, right? If, if they call a big bet on a very ragged board like this, you, you gotta be like, you know, arms up. If you bet small or just call, like, you just, and then they go, you can't really put them on, like, the range is still very wide.
Yeah.
Also, when we re-raise here, he's, if he calls or re-raises either one, he's doing it without closing the action.
That's true.
So he's, he's, that, his range has to be even stronger. He's got to fold a ton of ten, a ton of ten to our raise. Um. Um, my raise is to 15, Derek's raise to 20, I don't have a problem with. It's right around 25 and bigger that I'm thinking might be a problem, where we're
Yeah.
putting so much pressure on 2893 that he folds everything that we are way ahead of, leaving us uh, leaving us with a small amount of money, you know, leaving us with no risk against those hands, but a real problem when he calls and not enough profit when he was behind.
No.
In reality, sweet spot's probably like 18.
Yeah, but but 15 and 20, I think, are the same for that. I'm fine with that. It's, and maybe 25 is fine. At 30, anything bigger than that, then I think we're we've tipped over to the other side.
Yeah, I agree.
So I like, I think the the raise here is that is viable, understanding that if.
Yeah.
Button 3989 flats, then we're gonna just gonna try to check your shirt out.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I think that's good advice, guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
My first choice on this flop was to raise mainly with the interest of uh making it heads up, making it heads up pot.
I can see that. I, you you can understand why I didn't with three people in the pot.
Oh, 100%, 100%. And I take a call at some frequency as well. It's a mix for me.
Now, let's take a look at one more thing before getting rid of this hand. Let's, let's be player 3989. Um, we're gonna be him with, we're gonna be him with uh four, four, 10, 10, 7, 7. Um. And uh ace 10 suited. Those are his hands. Okay? And eight, oh, and eight, nine, eight, nine of hearts. He's got, he's he's got the eight, nine of hearts and eight, nine of clubs here, definitely.
You can have king ten suited.
You have king ten.
Jack ten suited.
Um.
Queen ten suited.
Yeah, but I know, but when he, when he does the raise, when the, when he hits his raise, so here he is, he hits his raise. Okay, he's got this set of hands, he does his raise. None of us have said that this raise is impossible with the suited connectors. It's not. Um, I think it's less frequen- frequent, but it's it's still there. But we all believe that, we all believe that that he can do this with ace 10, right?
Yep.
Man, the truth is, man, Joey wouldn't do it, but that doesn't mean he didn't.
Yep.
Okay, so he's got all those hands. He gets the fold and we call, right?
Yep.
Okay. Here's our call. 10 comes. He loves his ace 10 now. He loves his seven 10. He loves his pocket sevens and his pocket fours. He's all over that. And maybe he even decides to bluff the eight, nine, because you don't have a lot, because this lessens the number of tens in your range, so you have to do a lot of folding, right?
Mm hmm.
So all those reasons he makes this bet, and he, and here he makes this bet.
That's, that, that's perfect for getting the rest of the money in by the river.
Yep, this could, this can, this, this still works on that whole range. You can still be bluffing here. We call. Now, this is my thing on the river. Here it is on the river.
Boom.
All the value hands except for the fours are easy bets. He's got to think about your hand now when he makes this bluff. Is he trying to get you off jacks, queens, kings, and aces because he thinks he can bluff you off them? Is he afraid that you might have a 10?
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing. That's so important.
That was.
We have a lot of tens to play this.
Right.
Yeah, uh, and I'm gonna bring up a point when Scotty's done here.
I'm done. How did he, when he thinks about how, I guess I'm not, I'm still talking. How does he think we got here? Does he really love the eight, nine there? Okay, now.
This is, you are right. This is the line that 10x would take all day.
Then what's the purpose of his all-in if?
To get called.
You don't have. What does he think that you're, what is?
By aces, kings, queens, and jacks. He's not trying to get you to fold the aces, kings, queens, and jacks. He's trying to get called by them, and he's trying to get called by a seven. He doesn't know why you have a seven.
I was assuming that he would make that bet, assuming that aces, kings, and queens would fold as they should.
Yeah, so I mean, Scotty brings up second level thinking, which is not just what does he have, but what does, what are we perceived to have?
Yeah, our perceived range.
And and our perceived range is shit ton full of 10x.
So Larry.
Yeah.
So on the turn, when the 10 hits, this came up today, and it's come up in the past. We can dock that 10, can't we? We can dock that 10.
Yeah.
Out of position.
That's a really good point.
Oh, right.
Because our range is kind of flooded with these 10x type hands.
So maybe that's the play. So maybe our good play here is essentially turning our aces into a bluff.
And it was a small duck. It was 20% when we saw it earlier.
Yeah.
Yep, bet 12 or something like that.
We still don't know his range is that condensed at this point. We still have, he still has credit for a lot of 10x in the spot.
He does, but.
At this stage.
But what we saw in theory, that this 10 is really good for our range on this line, which allows us to dunk.
So we bet 12 and then fold? So we can bet fold here?
Yeah. You get raised.
I think bet fold makes sense.
You get raised, you're not up against eight, nine.
I don't think that the 10 is massively more favorable for us than it is for him at this stage in the hand, though. I think it's relatively equal. I think we're both pretty heavily weighted towards 10x.
Because he raised? He raised on the turn, so, I mean, he raised on the flop, so he could have a lot of tens in his range, is what you're saying?
He, did he not just call the flop?
No, no, he raised.
He bet 19.
Oh, he went to 19. He went to 19. Uh, okay, no, I'm sorry. I was operating, thinking it went, that he just called. Okay, disregard him.
And so when we do call, when, when we do call that raise, we're calling with all our tens that we would have here.
Yeah. And now we think we have the best hand, but we're not sure of it because he's got pocket sevens and pocket fours here, and.
I'm sorry, I got confused on the action.
Check raise him. Hmm.
Yeah, this is, I I like the donkey. I think there's, there's some direction with the donkey, and obviously somebody plays face up and raises you, you're out, but uh, I will say, though, raising this, uh, or docking this is gonna put you in some very unpleasant situations on river.
It's for sure.
Yes, when you check the river.
Exactly, yeah. And so that it we'd have to look at the solver solution more, but it it just becomes really complicated, or magic comes very complicated to play.
Save his hand, Larry, or when we get that three-way deal.
Sure, I will do it.
Multi-way march.
I'm multi-way march.
That's what we're doing.
Uh, well, guys, I appreciate you looking at this one. This is, this is obviously.
No, until that point, when you make those.
Probably a fold, but I was just so enamored with the fact that he only got two combos.
Yeah. That's also, I mean, that is, we've all been giving different arguments about it. I wish you had played it on ignition.
I, I might be moving. I might be moving.
When we see.
ACR has allowed me to play, but they, they have not freed my account to withdraw.
Dude, play a bet online. I switched from ACR to BetOnline, BetOnline slash Tiger Gaming. I mean, I'm playing on Bowdog. That's the same as Ignition. You don't need to waste time on ACR.
Yeah, I think I'm already done with ACR once the, if they release my money.
Absolute trash.
Um, if the whole point of these training sessions is to get all you people to play on Ignition, fuck this.
Yeah. I don't, that's why I'm not telling many people about it.
I want you guys there. Anyway. Uh, shall we end there?
Sounds good.
All right.
Well, thanks very much. I I learned a ton from this. This is really eye-opening. Uh, last two days have been like head explode for me, so I really appreciate this.
Well, I'll see you guys Monday at 11:15, and I promise entertaining hands.
So you are, what's your schedule like on on Monday, Scotty?
Um, oh, wait a minute. Am I in, hold on, I'm an idiot. This is the 20th. I'm in Barcelona on the, on the Monday. It may not be next week. I'll definitely be able to open the thing. I gotta check. Um, I